Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for coming. This is a Prescott City Council Workshop meeting. For the record, today is June 12, 2025. It's 9:30 a.m., and we'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Protem Kentelme.
Here.
Councilwoman Furworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Grady.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
And Councilman Moore is not here. I didn't notice he wasn't here. I'll note when he enters the meeting.
So we have one item on the agenda today, discussion and a continued item, GPA 22-001, Presentation and Discussion Regarding the Updated City of Prescott 2025 General Plan. Now, I guess I'll be turning it over to Chelsea Walton, our Community Development Director.
Chelsea, before you start, I just, again, wanted to set the table for the meeting today. We will be receiving a presentation from staff regarding the updates to the general plan, and then council will have discussion, and then mayor can open up the floor for public comment. We do have 27 public comment cards, so I would like to remind everybody that comments need to be three minutes or less. There is no clapping, hooting, hollering, any of that kind of stuff. Let's all have some decorum in the chambers, please. And if someone before you has already made a comment, let's not repeat comments. Okay? Thank you.
I will add that due to the very large number of public comment cards, I'll be holding it to a very strict three-minute limit. So I'll give you a warning at 30 seconds and then let you know when your time is up. Chelsea?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, council. Mayor Protem, mayor. Thank you. Just a brief recap of what the council accomplished at the last meeting. We established that the general plan is an aspirational document and not an operational one, and that there is no timeline for completion nor directive to complete any of the items in this plan. This document reflects the input from members of the General Plan Committee, members of the public, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, members of staff, and it captures ideas for council to consider over the next 10 years. But council directs future action and ultimately makes the decisions. At the last meeting, staff was directed to modify the goals and strategies, as well as the climate and energy section text discussed during the meeting. Staff also received direction regarding the proposed future land use map. Each of these changes have been made to the draft documents that council now has in this meeting packet. Please note, for ease of our discussion today, staff has presented the text of the general plan with any corresponding charts and graphs, and that has been given one set of page numbers that we'll refer to throughout the meeting. And what will happen is, once council approves the language, then we'll add it back into the pretty format for consideration at the June 24 voting meeting of council. So for today's conversation, we'll begin with a review of the proposed future land use map updated based on our discussion last time. We'll review the updated plan content, the main text of the document. Then we'll give council the opportunity to provide staff with any final direction. That way we can prepare the item for the next voting agenda on Tuesday, June 24. All right, with that, we will go ahead and launch into the discussion on the land use map. And for this discussion, I am going to end the slideshow here and pull up the map in a larger format. So this version of the map depicts the changes that were discussed at the last meeting, the changes on the west side of the map that received consensus from council at that time. But before we dive into the east side of the map, which I know council wanted to continue that that conversation, I'd like to take a moment and discuss the desire of council for the commercial nodes as we discussed and received consensus. So as you can see, the commercial nodes, there were two that were discussed, and let me get my mouse here, one on Outer Loop Road, as well as one on 89, North 89. And it was clear to staff that council desired to see more commercial on the north part of town. So with the selection of these two locations, the team went back through adjacent jurisdictional plans, Simpo's regional transportation plan, and contemplated future private developments in these areas. In this research, we found that the node off of 89 in the center of the page here, this node would be a good addition. That it's off of the major corridor, it's north of, oh, circle it, yes, it's this here in the center of the page. However, we did not find anything currently pending that would be supportive-
Chelsea, Councilwoman Furworth has a question.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So, again, for the the west Outer Loop node, we didn't find any future projects that would be supportive of a commercial node there on Outer Loop Road. The county's recently adopted comprehensive plan, which has an overlapping planning boundary, depicts the area as agricultural or residential, zero to one dwelling unit per acre in that area. As Outer Loop Road now is a two-lane, smaller road, we didn't find anything also in Simpo's planning document that there were any roadway connections contemplated in that area. So it would be staff's recommendation that the commercial node off of the west Outer Loop Road area be removed from the final version of the map. That said, in our communication with the county, they are in the process of updating their zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. They're currently gathering information from each jurisdiction, performing interviews with stakeholders, and we're going to have a seat at that table. And at that time, we can discuss the matter of commercial in that area, and the intent being to find the additional commercial in our north area and situate it in the right place, in the right way with our neighboring planning partners. So I'm going to put those two items out, the consensus, I'd like to receive consensus on removing the west Outer Loop node and leaving in the Highway 89 commercial employment node where it is.
Councilwoman Fur-
Thank you, mayor. I'm the one that agreed and asked to put something there. And I'll be honest, I haven't been up on West Outer Loop Road in a long time. So I went driving last night for quite a while, the whole western side. And honestly, that is country. It's gorgeous, it's undeveloped, it's quirky, it's beautiful. And honestly, I'm I'm changing my mind about anything west of that blue airport-specific-area-plan. It is so gorgeous up there. And honestly, you know, maybe 10 years from now, 20 years from now, future councils, but I don't support anymore, now that I've seen it with my own eyes, that not only do I not want our our commercial zone there, I think we should be focused on what's more Prescott than country.
And I'll add my thoughts to that. As the last meeting, I indicated that anything west of the airport-specific-area-plan boundary, all six of those sections, I believe, should be removed from the map, and I will not support this map or the entire general plan if you retain it. Brandon Montoya?
Thank you, mayor. I have a question. I guess I'm just trying to understand the context a little bit better, Chelsea. So if we remove this from, if we remove those six, you know, squares from the planning area, does that stop a Wildcat subdivision from going in there?
No.
Okay, that's all I had. Thanks.
Councilman Grady.
Yes, thank you, mayor. At the last meeting, I as well raised concern about sprawl, frankly, going 10, 15, 17 miles out from our downtown to to take an area that, as Councilwoman Furworth said, is clearly rural character. So I, again, support stopping at the blue line, the airport-specific-area-planning-boundary.
Councilman Gambogi.
At the last meeting, I said we could learn a lesson from Chino and PV. And the best way to protect the beauty of these areas is to annex them. So I'm not going to vote for any changes to the map before the start of the last meeting.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, mayor. Dallin, in our last meeting, when we were discussing the general plan, you talked about the impact of identifying an area for land use in your general plan and the importance just to have a say, for example, like a wildlife corridor. So if you look at the property to the west of these six spots that are currently undeveloped, those areas are already developed. We can't put a wildlife corridor there. And then you have the blue line, which is the airport-specific-area-boundary, and that's within our current plan, and that could be developed. I see this area as a potential for a wildlife corridor. Could you speak to how by leaving these six parcels of land, it gives us a say in the future development of that area, and that's why it would be important to leave it in there? Even if we don't plan to annex it at this time or anything else, it's just it gives us a voice in what would happen in that area?
Yeah, so the general way to remember, I think, is you you plan for what you want to have a say about, and you annex what you want to control. So we cannot, even with this plan, we cannot include in our future land use map the wildlife corridor specifically, but it does allow us to to have some say, right? Now, even with the areas that's that are included in our plan, they're not in our city, and so development can happen without us. But we do get to say, we do have some input. Whether an area is included in the future land use map or not, it can be, it can be developed, it can be, you know, all of those things can still happen. But if it's in our plan, we get a little bit of a say about what happens there. If it's annexed, then we have control over what happens there.
Just as a follow-up statement, I believe it's important to keep that land in our plan because it gives us a say, it gives us a voice in future development. Councilman Montoya already asked a question just a minute ago. If we don't include this in our plan, does it prevent any Wildcat developments? It doesn't. You know, whether we put it in their plan or not, somebody can just go out and develop in the county, and we have no say. So I think we should keep it in.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, mayor. I just, I have a follow-up question around the developments. And Chelsea, you may not be equipped to answer this, so if you aren't, feel free to phone a friend. But my question is, going back to that Wildcat subdivision component, does that have implications for our active management area in terms of water usage?
Well, it's within our active area. The thing is, we don't have control over what gets developed in the county. So, but yes, I mean, it's it's within the area, and I don't know if Brian wants to speak to that or Gwen.
Phone a friend.
Phone a friend. Good morning, mayor and council. So the city's water service area is comprised within the city boundary primarily, but we also have an obligation to serve in areas outside contractually. This area is not contract, we're not contractually obligated to provide water service here. Sorry, we're not obligated to provide water service to the areas outside of our service area, which these areas are outside of our service.
So, but I guess, Gwen, what I'm what I'm driving towards a little bit is, again, I think about that the problem with Wildcat subdivisions for the greater aquifer that we share with, you know, the region, is that someone could go in there and become really, really abusive water users and have exempt wells that are fairly bad users of water. They could put in giant football fields of lawns and do a lot of damage to our aquifer. And we wouldn't, you know, the first step of having involvement around that is having these areas on our map, I would think. From a from a water perspective, it would seem to plan for that reality, we have to have them on the map. If we take them off the map, but we're almost saying to a degree is, go ahead and punch in wells here and be the most abusive water user possible. That's my concern, I guess. And that's maybe more of a policy question than a than a, you know, a technical question, so I don't feel like you need to respond to that. But that's, that's my concern around removing these from, you know, from a water management perspective. I think we have to plan for areas outside of our city limits and what potential impacts that users outside of our city limits are going to have on the shared aquifer.
I would only say that that scenario could happen whether they're in our general plan or not, because ADWR is the one that controls exempt wells, and this area would likely be developed with exempt wells unless there was a system for them to tie in to in the future.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we're being a little arrogant here, thinking that the city of Prescott is going to be able to control all these areas outside our city limits. These areas are in the county, and we've talked about having regional cooperation to try to work on different water management policies, and we should do that. But this this is the county, and for us to think that we can control what the county does is rather arrogant. If we communicate with them, if we coordinate with them, and we bring these concerns up, we might have some impact on how that future development occurs. But in the meantime, this is very raw, undeveloped land, where I still see an occasional pronghorn out there, and I'd like to see it stay that way. I've talked to the Williamson Valley Community as organization. They were never even contacted about the proposal, when we originally saw it, of including their areas. Every single person that I've heard of from that area does not want to even contemplate being annexed by the city. I've been a member of that organization for almost eight years, and I contacted the president, and he said, no one's ever talked to us about that, and we have no interest in being annexed. So even though the the current map excludes the development area, as I said, I don't support anything west of the airport-specific-area-plan boundary. Mayor Protem Kentelme?
Thank you, mayor. You know, I worked on the Yabapai County Comprehensive Plan Review Board myself when we were crafting their general plan. This situation with those six parcels came up a lot in our group. This is a situation where you're damned if you do, and you're damned if you don't. If we annex that in, this is a scenario that will happen, it will become Prescott. We're not going to annex inland and then go to anybody that might buy it or own it and say, no, you can't do anything but keep it wide open. So if you don't intend on having that land developed, then don't annex it in, because if you annex it in and it becomes part of Prescott, sometime in the future, it is going to become developed. It just is. Nobody's going to hang on to all those six parcels, including the city of Prescott, and make sure nobody ever develops them. It just isn't reality. So we'll just have to make a decision on that. I'm leaning towards leaving it county right now. And I think that the county, if you looked at their map, I'll have to go back and check, it's been a few years, it does actually overlap that area. So I will check that out for sure. But-
It does.
Again, it's a tough decision to do. But the reality is, we're not going to annex it and let it sit there and make sure nobody ever develops it. It's just not going to happen. Thanks.
Thank you for the comments. So what I'm hearing is there are three, four members of council that are inclined to remove everything west of the airport-specific-area-planning-boundary, and perhaps two or three that are not in favor of that of that proposition. So I'd like to see if we need more conversation around this, just to give staff a good direction of what this map should reflect in its final form. Or are we at a stalemate?
Well, if you have any interest in having this general plan voted on and approved, you'll take those out. If you don't think that I can influence the voters in this city, then you're naive, because I will not support this.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those comments. And again, this is a reflection of council's direction to staff. This is not being personally directed by me or any members of my team. So whatever the consensus is of council, we work at the pleasure of council.
Oh, you have a majority.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarity, for each point in the plan, we can move forward with four votes. We need five votes for the ultimate adoption of the plan.
Ultimate adoption.
Right, which would be on the 24th.
Yes.
For this component.
Right. For each section, if there's four, we can, we can move forward.
Wonderful.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, mayor. I think it's really important that we clarify that we're not talking about annexation. I'm not sure why Connie was focusing on annexation, because that's not the discussion that we're having today. There's no discussion about annexing that land. We're just talking about including that in the general plan. I think that's really important to clarify. Joe or Dallin, do you want to comment to that?
Yeah, that's accurate. This has nothing to do with annexation. This is about planning. I will say that annexation is an entire process. It's laid out in statute, and general plan is not one of the elements of annexation. The element, though, does include a petition signed by at least 50% of the landowners and at least 50% of the owners of the value of the property. So this is a process driven by landowners, not by the city.
Right. I just think it's really important for the voters in the audience to understand we're not talking about annexing at all today. We're just talking about including this area in our general plan. Thank you.
And to mayor's point, I think we have majority consensus. So we're going to move forward if that's all right with council, unless there's any other conversation. So what I'd like to do now is is continue the conversation on the west side. Council was forwarded a letter by James Deepwell Ranches. The request is to change the Deepwell Ranch parcels outside of the city limits on that west side back to low-medium density, as recommended by the general plan and Planning and Zoning Commission. If council is inclined to make the change, we would recommend that each of those land sections be consistent so that the the whole area would be reflected. And just so council is aware, I'm going to point out which land sections we're talking about. So Deepwell Ranch has this large land section here on the very northwest boundary of the ASAP, as well as this area here, and then these two land sections here and here. So essentially, the the map boundary inside the ASAP would all turn yellow instead of the the brown, which is the very low density. So again, the the low to medium density that's being requested is a two to seven dwelling unit per acre. Per state statute, we're required to allow for at least one dwelling unit per acre. So this request is, makes sense from a planning perspective. As we would anticipate, it would eventually be developed that way. So we'll work that into our water modeling as well as other components for future planning. So so staff doesn't have a problem with the request, and I leave that to council to discuss if if that change is what we want to move forward with.
Councilman Grady.
So I have some concerns about the map process. As my wife knows, I spent about two hours on this last night. And so it looks like in the January 8 map that was submitted from General Plan Review Committee to P and Z was that it was one to seven.
Correct.
And so was it ever discussed at General Plan Review Committee or-
No.
P and Z about two to seven?
So there was a conversation at the General Plan Commission that the map designation for very low density be removed. So in other words, there would be only a low to medium density of one to seven dwelling units per acre. However, when it came to council, I want to say it was the one of the March meetings, either March 11 or or March 25, where council made the decision to add the very low-density designation back into the map and classify these areas as the very low-density.
Thank you. Mayor, since I still seem to have the floor, could I ask another question-
Yeah, please continue.
-around this? So what's the implication of one to seven versus two to seven? Or what are we at now?
So those-
Very low, it's one dwelling unit per acre. Why would we want one dwelling unit per acre going up 89?
So that is up to-
Oh.
-the council to decide.
Okay, sorry.
So again, it was recommended by general plan and planning and zoning that the very low-density designation be removed entirely and that there be provided more flexibility within the low-to-medium-density. But per state statute, again, we have to provide at least one dwelling unit per acre.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think we need a little more advice here. If we're contemplating the east side potentially being something that we would- If we're contemplating the east side potentially being something that we would consider for annexation because of the Arizona Eco Development plans and also being on the border of the Prescott Valley area, 2 to 7 dwelling units per acre seems like a better designation without having to risk any kind of a major plan amendment?
It would make...
Are you correct on that?
Yes. It would make sense for it to be classified as the low-to-medium, the 2 to 7, as you put.
Well, I think that's where I would recommend that we go. Any other concerns or comments?
I have a recommendation that the rest of the area inside of the ASAP be the pale-yellow color, which reflects the low-to-medium density at 2 to 7 dwelling units per acre.
I agree. Thank you.
Can we get consensus on that, council? I'm seeing headbobs. Okay. All right. We're going to move forward then. And since Mr. Mayor brought it up, the east side of the map, this is the meat and potatoes here. So I believe, I'm not sure if I see him in the audience, our airport director also had a comment about the east side, but per Mr. Mayor's comments at the last meeting, we had left the areas colored in inside the ASAP, the airport-specific area planning boundary. And again, that reflects the low-to-medium density, 2 to 7 dwelling units per acre. But from the airport perspective as well, it made sense to leave those areas in as a planning function. There was discussion at the last meeting that those areas are developed, and that's true. But again, the map provides us a little bit of a voice, a little bit of a say with conversations relative to planning for these areas. So the intent is not necessarily to annex them, but again, this is in the airport-area-specific planning boundary, and the airport director is on board with keeping them in.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have no problem with keeping them in. My question is, you know, we just did away with a bunch of very low, and in the approach into the airport, more homes equals more noise complaints. And so I appreciate where we have brown and where there's nothing developed, you know. I don't understand adding 2 to 7 homes per acre over hundreds of acres to have hundreds of phone calls. So I'm not sure if the noise, I know about all the complaints when people are taking off, is at the same noise level when you're coming in. And so that's, it just concerns me that we would start at 2 to 7 for a lot of that land.
Well, we probably ought to hear from Rick Reiter. Rick, are you here?
Doesn't look like he made it.
John Kubrick. Is John here? No.
Don't see him. But I can tell you that the areas that are already developed outside of that area are somewhat, I mean, this one on the north side is more dense than 2 to 7 dwelling units per acre. However, the planning...
I was not talking about touching the neighborhoods.
Oh, right. You're looking at this area?
Yeah. There's an odd, weird little shape, color, line between brown and yellow. Again, I'm sure there's rationale, but I didn't understand it.
Parcel boundary, yeah.
And then the second thing was, then why aren't all four of those brown as a starting point?
Okay. We can make them the very-low-density if that's what council's inclined to do.
Councilmember Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. My question, Chelsea, have we engaged the residents of those neighborhoods that are in that planning boundary about them being in our plan?
No, I don't believe we have. That's not standard practice.
Got it. Thank you.
So the area off of the runway here on the north side, that is an AED parcel, as is this parcel here. And should those areas ever develop within, you know, the Arizona Eco Development Master Plan, I know that's, this is planning, this would be a very long time in the future. Those may develop at the 2 to 7 dwelling units per acre. So I think...
Correct, but that would be a future negotiation, a future development agreement, lots of discussion about wildlife and recreation and open space and all those things happening. So again, I'm just not sure why we're starting undeveloped, raw land on the approach as 2 to 7.
Well, don't we have to be concerned about major plan amendments?
Yes, sir. But with annex...
So describe that.
So a major plan amendment is the same process as a general plan adoption. You have the public outreach, the 60-day public comment period, and it requires the supermajority, actually, it's a 2/3s majority of council, so that would be 5 of 7. That's the requirement. But with annexations also requiring a supermajority, we would anticipate taking those things together at the same time if a general plan major amendment would be required. So what I'm hearing is that this area off of the approach on the runway be retained as a very-low-density at 1 dwelling unit per acre, and I will work with the airport director to figure out a good boundary of what that would look like, as far as the shape of that land use designation. Or was there more? Councilwoman Freworth.
I think that works. I think that works.
Okay. Can I get consensus from council on that mapping change?
Oh, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
All right. So moving right along then, that really...
Mayor Protam can tell me, had a comment.
Yeah, Chelsea?
Yes.
I see the odd shape, going back to where we were just talking about, that almost triangular area of green. Does that, is that, shouldn't that be denoted as a splay?
Not on this map.
Okay, but it is a splay.
No, I believe the splay is with takeoff.
Okay. But even, what about with our extension? Is that the boundary of the airport today?
So the red line, the red dashed line depicts city limits today.
Okay.
And I believe this area was bumped out in contemplation of the eventual extension.
Yeah. Would it be beneficial to maybe put that on the map?
No, ma'am. The only reason is that this map is specific to land use designations, and when we start adding different components, it muddies the clarity of the map.
See, and I would just think it'd be the opposite. If somebody's actually coming here to look at that map, it might be helpful for them if they're contemplating a land use.
Sure. That would, sure. That would be when they investigate the zoning and any other property restrictions. That's when that would come into play. Again, this doesn't depict zoning for the property either. This is just land use.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other conversations on the map as a whole? I've received direction from council on the west side of the map, on the east side of the map. Any other questions, comments, issues, or concerns relative to the map in its entirety? If not, staff will make the changes as discussed. Yes?
Yeah. I know we have county islands right now.
Yes, we do.
Inside of city limits, but this map doesn't depict any county islands within city limits.
Correct.
And so what does that mean for the people that live in the county islands? What does that mean for them?
That means that should they ever decide to annex, that the land use designation for that area would be what is reflected on this map. So for instance, we have areas off of, through the Dells that are county islands that are residential, so like in this area here. So this would simply mean if they were to ever annex, they would be designated as this pale-yellow color, which is the low-to-medium density, which is their current land use.
Okay. So the annexation of existing homes within the city, those islands, that would be a citizen homeowner-led process to try and get annexed by the city? Is that what you're describing to me? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
So it could go that way. The city could work to annex with those people. So, but annexation would involve property owner desire and communication. So again, this doesn't mean that we desire to annex.
Is that the 50%?
That's the 50%.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So this is just if they came, 50% of them or more, that's where we would start.
Correct.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions, comments on the map? Okay, staff has received direction, and at this point, I think we're going to pivot back to the presentation. And let me just gather my things here.
I'm sorry, Chelsea. I did have one more question related to the map. Because we've spent a nornant amount of time, thanks to Prop 484, talking open space and recreation, are all those matched here on this map that we're talking about for land use? Is that a...
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect? Thank you very much.
Yes. So the Glassford Dell's recent purchase is reflected. You can see it in the green here in the center of the map. Again, the land use that we anticipate, different than zoning, but it is reflected here on the map.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Back to the presentation. We're going to move into the content, the text of the plan. So as I mentioned, we received consensus from council on the changes discussed at the last meeting. And in your packets, beginning on page 6 of your meeting packet, is the introduction sections. And I have them on the screen just in case for reference, but the section goes through page 18 of your packet. So I'd invite council to direct staff if there are any other changes, questions. As you can see on page 7, we did add the value statements back in, as discussed previously. Do we have consensus on the text? Oh.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Thank you. Some of the public comments at the last meeting had me look at the paragraph that starts on page 7 with "the challenge for the community."
Okay, bottom of page 7, got it?
Yep. And, you know, there was two things I thought about there. We're missing, you know, "The challenge for the community, continued vitality and longevity of existing." We're missing the word "residential," both at the beginning of that sentence and then "suitable for," again, it says "business, commercial, industrial." I think residential is part of the mix that we've got to find the challenge. So, and then further down, "without undue negative impacts on existing neighborhoods, without degrading our water and air quality environmental resources." Because I think the parentheses, for example, "water contributes to our quality of life" is just kind of awkward hanging out there. And then you end a sentence. And then I would love to see at the end, the challenge of all of this is doing all of this at acceptable community levels. And, you know, there was a statement made at the last meeting, and it just hit me like a ton of bricks, and it's while keeping Prescott Prescott.
Oh.
And I think that sums up the way the community has been expressing in multiple public comments is the love of Prescott, and how do we not lose that through all of these challenges and changes? So those were just suggestions.
Thank you. We have suggestions from Councilwoman Freworth on the bottom of page 7. Can I get consensus on those changes? Anybody?
I guess so. I'm good.
Okay. Okay. I'm seeing headbobs, so we're going to move forward. Any other comments?
Well, I'd like to see the Tree City USA eliminated.
That'll be in a later slide, Mr. Mayor. We're focusing on pages 6 through 18, the introduction section, sir.
Right, and it's listed on page 7.
Oh, I see, in the section. I apologize. Thank you for pointing that out. And I would assume that that would be the entire section later on in the plan as well?
We can get into the details, but I think the whole thing ought to go.
Consent?
Now, there is one requirement under the general plan for cities that have military installations. And we do have a base here for the bushmasters out on Heritage Park, and there's no reference to it at all in the general plan.
So that has not come up in either of the original plans. We can definitely look at that, sir, and consider how much area their base operations take.
Well, it is a requirement.
Yes, sir. Any other...
Councilman Gambogi.
Just for the people sitting in the room here, when you talk about consensus, understand that's not all in agreement.
Correct.
Because I disagree with everything that's being proposed today.
Well, we have a recommendation on the floor, the removal of the Tree City in the introduction section. Can I get mostly consensus?
I disagree.
Mayor Protam can tell.
Okay, I am a go on that, but let me go back just a little bit. Did we, I don't recall us making a final decision on whether or not we are going to move past the general required elements. Are we going to go ahead and try to work on the elements that are required after we hit 50,000 people? Have we ever made that final decision?
So there was council consensus, I believe it was at the March 11th or March 25th meeting, to keep those sections in. Again, it was consensus at the time, and we know Mr. Mayor takes issue with that. But that was the consensus that staff received.
Well, don't you think it would be productive for today if we make that right off the bat? There's no reason going through these 25 different situations if we're not required to do it, and if we choose not to keep that there. I mean, I'd like to see what the rest of the council thinks about that. Are we going to go ahead and wade into an area? We are not 50,000 in population. Let's get a direction on that, because that'll save a lot of time if we decide not to move into that area. It's not required right now. We're not 50,000 population. So I'd like to know that before we move forward. It's a waste of time to go through all of these elements that are not required. And then the voluntary elements. That's another whole section. Have we decided to choose and keep all of those voluntary elements? And that's where that Tree City is. So can we establish that before we go forward today for everybody's benefit?
Yeah, we can definitely talk about that and look at that. I'd like to make a comment on it. So a lot of the voluntary elements and some of the elements when you hit 50,000 have been in previous general plans. They include the fire, the economic development, tourism things. So I'd like to, for council to consider each of those items, recognizing that they aren't, quote, "required by state statute," but is there benefit for the community in keeping them in? So, but we can have that conversation right now.
Well, Chelsea, clarification. Is it all or nothing? Can we pick and choose?
Yes.
I mean, is it, so if we decide to take the, you know, the elements that we're not required to do right now because we're not 50,000, can we break those up and pick and choose? Or is it all or nothing? We have to take them all?
No, that's an excellent question. So what is required per state statute? Are those items, if you're on page 6, it's the required to be in the general plan, the land use, circulation, et cetera?
Yeah, can you...
Those are what's required.
Well, either I can read or you can read for the public's benefit. What we are required to do right now, which is the land use map, circulation, open space, growth areas, environmental planning, cost of development, and water resources. What we are not required right now to do is conservation, recreation, transit plans, public services and buildings, housing, energy. Then the voluntary elements, again, for the public's knowledge here, economic development is voluntary, tourism, healthcare, dark skies, Tree City USA, climate, digital connectivity, youth programs and childcare, art, culture, events, and museums. So as you can see, that more than doubles what we're actually required to do today. So as you can see, that more than doubles what we're actually required to do today, unless we voluntarily decide to move forward with some of these other inclusions.
So my recommendation for that conversation is, since I have a slide that depicts each of the sections for each of the chapters, that perhaps we have that conversation as we move forward on the slide, so that we can see the bulk of what's in that chapter. And then council can choose, I want this in, I want this out.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. At our last council meeting, when we were discussing the general plan, Greg came up and spoke as a member of the audience. And he shared that based on our population and the 2020 census and the growth rate that we are using in the general plan, that we are already over 50,000. I would like to know a definitive answer from city staff if that is indeed true, because I think that will drive this process. We need to know hard numbers and not just guess, are we over 50? Are we under 50? I'm in favor of leaving these items in, especially if we really are over 50. So I would like to know from city staff, what is our true population?
So the U.S. Census Bureau's latest estimate was taken on July 1st of 2024, so one year ago, just about. At that time, the population of the city was 48,224. The census number in 2020 was 45,903.
And we were using what percentage for growth rate?
1.5 to 1.8.
A range?
Yeah, between 1.5 and 1.8, year after year.
So that still puts us below 50,000.
So I've, oh, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the discussion, I agree to have it on a level-by-level place, section by section. However, I did want to let people understand where we are versus the previous meeting. At the previous meeting, we started this council, when the plan got handed over to us, with 354 strategic plans in the document. 354, which I strongly objected to being a town that doesn't have the staffing or the money to even think about 354. So at the last meeting, we were down to 334, with a huge reduction largely in climate, Tree City, and I think the other one was the, maybe Dark Skies, I cannot remember. But most of that reduction of the 20 came out of the climate section. As of today, with the plan that we have to review today and discuss it all with you, we are down to 107 strategies, including the elements that they're, that are being discussed today. And so my perspective is I do like talking it by section, because in our, in our strategic plan that we unanimously approved last year twice, there are elements like economic development and tourism that, that we absolutely plan on working on. And so I don't know why we would not have those things. So I do agree that rather than unanimously saying, "We're not doing anything in 50K," or "We're not doing anything," I think we're to the point now with 106, we're within the ability to do some things if it's the right thing to do for, for Prescott. So I appreciate us if we would take it section by section.
Thank you for that feedback.
Councilman Grady.
Yes, I agree with Councilwoman Ferworth that, you know, economic development's got to be in there. It's voluntary. Housing needs to be in there. I think all of the voluntary elements need to be in there. We shouldn't get hung up on a population of 50,000, whether it's here today or it's going, or it's going to be next year. We should be planning for the future. It's a 10-year plan. We should be planning with all of the elements that are currently contained in this plan. And yes, we have made significant reductions in the number of strategies, as well as in the narrative and number of pages, in response to a rather small interest group. And I think we've done enough. I do not believe that we need to cut anything further.
Councilman Gambogi.
I strongly support the general plan given to us by the committee, city staff, and the residents. And I reject this exercise in micromanagement.
All right. We've received comment from council.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to phrase something carefully. I find it really interesting that as a council, we flip-flop. There was just a few months ago, when we agreed to all of these elements, back in March, we voted 6-1 to accept all this. And now we're trying to find consensus on what we can and can't agree on. So I lay part of the blame at the council's feet, but I also lay part of the blame at the community's feet. And please don't be offended by what I'm going to say. But I was appointed by the mayor to serve on this committee three years ago. And I was attending these monthly general plan committee meetings. We had a committee of 11, 13 people. We had a great committee. Ted served on that committee. Councilman Montoya and I were both council liaisons to that committee. During that whole process, three years of developing this plan, how many of you were at those meetings? Five or six? But now, when it's time to vote for the meeting, all of a sudden, people are taking exception, "Well, I don't like this piece, and I don't like this piece." It's like we're trying to build an elephant by committee. This plan will never appeal to everybody. It's not going to happen. We can't pass a plan that's going to meet everybody's needs. That's all there is to it. We have put three years of effort into this plan. And I agree completely with Councilman Grady. We need to plan for the future. Yeah, I just did the numbers. According to the 1.5 growth rate, we're at 49,450, meaning we're 550 residents away from hitting 50,000. And this is a 10-year plan. It only makes sense that we plan based on a population of 50,000. We're within a few hundred residents of that now. Every element that is in there needs to stay in there. I am in complete agreement with Councilman Gambogi, Councilman Grady, and Councilman Montoya.
All right. We've received feedback from...
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Yeah, let me just make one clarification to what you said, Eric. When we were voting way back when, it was like the topic of transit plans, or the topic, were we in or were we out? The topic, I have no problem with topics. It was the amount of goals and strategies underneath that that got it to the point of being unwieldy. So don't misinterpret the fact that I was aligned, and still am, to have economic development in the strategic plan. But I'm, I was never aligned to 354 that that's what we're going to be working on. And again, I read the statute to you all last time. Section seven says, "We're going to render an annual report." I couldn't imagine rendering an annual report on 354 work items. So, so I'm okay with the topics, and I'm certainly okay with where we are now, down to 106 strategies and 50-something goals. We're within the reasonable, we have the wherewithal, and like you said, our community is very diverse, and they have lots of different opinions. And I think the question is, is are we striking the right balance to have the majority of voters voting yes? So that's my thoughts.
And I would add that a lot of these components that are required after the trigger of 50,000 population are based on the expectation that cities of that size have a sufficient financial base to be able to support some of these strategies and put them into effect. So just because we're teetering on the edge of that doesn't mean that all of a sudden we have so much additional revenue to commit to producing these strategies and completing these goals and these voluntary or not-required elements. I mean, if we can strip this down to a basic general plan that the community at large is willing to vote for and accept, I think that should be our primary goal. If it gets too unwieldy and so many different elements in here that are controversial, somebody's going to say, "Well, I don't like Goal X, so I'm not going to vote for the whole plan." And we, you know, having to contemplate going through this whole process again with another group or a consultant or something else is just giving me a heartburn. So please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So believe it or not, we only have a few comments that I received consensus on in the introduction section, spanning pages six through 18. I think at this time, I'm going to move forward to the next section of the, the plan. The chapter title is "Resiliency and Sustainability." This begins at the very bottom of page 18 of your packets and spans through 33 of your packet. And as Mr. Mayor pointed out, there are requirements in state statutes. And one of them is for the changes that we made last time in the climate and energy section. Staff reviewed the statutes and found we needed to include text that mentions the access to incident solar energy for all general categories of land use. So within this section, staff is proposing a addition, an addition on page 33 of your text at the very top, beginning with the paragraph, "Increasing the use." So to comply with this statute, staff recommends a simple addition, "Increasing the use of and access to renewable, comma, such as solar, wind, and geothermal, energy and promoting energy efficiency." So a simple addition that complies with the statute. I'm, I see comments, and that's why we're bringing it up.
Well, I have a comment on page 29.
Yes, sir. Let's start there.
We're talking about the big Chino groundwater flow model. The draft here indicates that the model will be completed in late '24. And we know that the modeling agency now is kicking that off into maybe mid to late '25.
Yes, sir.
So that needs to be corrected.
Good catch. Thank you, sir. And that being kind of a technical point, we'll go ahead and just update that. And I'll get with Water Resources to ensure the time is correct.
Councilwoman Moore.
I'll pass it this time. Thank you.
All right. Yes. So again, on page 33 at the top, "Increase the use of" is currently in the text. "We recommend and access to." So the sentence would be, "Increasing the use of and access to renewable," which is currently in the text, "such as solar, wind, and geothermal," is the addition. And then it would continue on with the rest of the sentence. So I'm going to read it all together. "Increasing the use of and access to renewable, such as solar, wind, and geothermal, energy and promoting energy efficiency." And then it carries on from there. Okay. I'm getting headbobs that that's okay. Staff feels that this would be compliant with the statute, which is why we bring it up.
Mayor Protem.
Chelsea, so that has to be that detailed. It, I mean, if you, the use of renewable energy, doesn't that pretty much say it all?
I, I would hope so. The statute says that the element has to include consideration of air quality, which we have. But then it says, "and access to incident solar energy for all general categories of land use." So we feel like adding that would, would be more compliant with the statute.
Do we currently have any geothermal or wind farms here?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm seeing consensus on those changes. And now I'd like to open it up for just the entire section, again, pages 18 through 33 of your packet. Is there consensus with leaving these elements in?
I think that whole paragraph referencing the U.S. Department of Energy is no longer valid because of the federal changes in energy policy within the federal government.
That would be on page 33. It's the second paragraph from the top.
Yeah, I mean, they've eliminated the National Electric Vehicle Initiative and all of the charging stations that were originally anticipated to be developed. You know, those have all been canceled.
Mr. Mayor has a recommendation. Can I get consensus on the removal of that paragraph?
Councilman Grady.
So I'm not sure candidly what the open source tool is, but I really think that we need to keep that paragraph in there relative to electric vehicle charging stations. I think that to be competitive with Sedona and Flagstaff, who have probably five to 10 times more charging stations than we do, we're looking for tourist dollars. We're looking to attract folks with, with incomes, with EVs, to stop off in Prescott and not just go to Sedona and Flagstaff, where they can get to a charging station. This is all about competition. And there's a real cost benefit, I think, to exploring electric vehicle charging stations, particularly in the downtown.
Other council comments on this section?
Well, I don't mind being able to support businesses putting in a Level 2 charging station. Right now, we only have three in the whole city. We've got one at Spring Hill Suites. We have a couple over in Yavapai College. And where's the last one? Oh, at the Prescott Junction. Although they did raise their rates to cover the extra electricity costs. So we're paying for it one way or the other. But I agree with you. I think having some more Level 2s would be valuable. But I just don't want to conflict with anything that has to do with governmental support for it, knowing what the federal government's concerns are in this area. So maybe we can say some kind of a goal of supporting local businesses putting up Level 2 charging stations. I know we had a speaker at the men's forum who was actually almost late, because he had his car over at the Prescott College. And he finally got a spot there, and he didn't want to leave before he had a chance to charge up. So sometimes that happens when there's very limited access.
So we have a couple of recommendations on the floor.
Yeah, we might be able to just remove the reference to the U.S. Department of Energy. You know, then, then it just becomes local.
We could say something like the, for quickly estimate, just start with economic insight, you know, the word "economic" just start it there.
Economic impacts associated with the development, et cetera?
Then you have the reference to including the necessary data to help communities apply for federal funding. Maybe we could take "federal" out of that. Hate to be wordsmithing this stuff.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was just going to say that, and you took the words out of my mouth. I feel like we're getting down way too nitty-gritty and wordsmithing. We have 133 whatever page document, and I just don't think it's our place to wordsmith this. And, and I understand, Mayor, that you have concerns about the current administration, but this is a 10-year plan, and in four years, it could change again. And if it changes, then we'll have different policies. And I just don't think that we can write a 10-year document based on who the current administration is and what their current policies are. I think we need to write policies based on our city's vision and values and future, and not on the current administration.
Well, we have comments from council, most recently amending that second paragraph, starting at economic, removing the word "federal." With those changes, are we okay with, with that page? With those changes, are we okay with that page? I see head shakes and head nods.
Counselor Gamboge?
We are so far down this rabbit hole, I can feel the warmth from the earth's core.
All right. With that note, I will ask if there are any other questions or comments on this section as a whole. Again, this section spans pages 18 to 33 of your packet. Any other amendments?
Counselwoman Ferworth?
Chelsea, I don't have any content-related amendments. I just have some phraseology or things. I've just figured I'd send those to you separately as I was coming across them last night. Thank you.
That'd be fine. Thank you so much. Okay, let's keep this ball rolling. Page, so the Community Connected section begins on page 33 of your packet and ends on page 45 of your packet. Any questions, comments, issues, concerns with the chapters contained within this section?
Counselor Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On page 42, with the Open Space Policy Goals and Strategies, I believe one of the most important strategies in that particular section has been deleted, and I'd like it put back in. It's Create an Open Space Acquisition Advisory Commission.
I support that.
Thank you.
I object to that, to adding more government.
All right. Two in favor, one opposed?
I reject the whole process at this point.
Counselwoman Ferworth?
I've seen a question about another point, so...
Should there be a reference to Proposition 482 in this?
The proposition that's currently going to ballot?
Right.
We can't reference it if it hasn't been adopted by the voters yet. Yeah, and I try to stray away from referencing certain aspects. Would you like me to include something about an initiative that's going forward for voter consideration?
Well, I think the proposition itself and the vote on it would meet Counselor Grady's concern. That certainly would be an advisory vote on how open space is going to be managed in the future.
Counselor Grady, would that satisfy your comment?
I believe that Prop 484 protects the existing open space inventory, but I think we're looking at additional opportunities for open space protection and development over the 10-year period.
Okay.
Counselwoman Ferworth?
Just a question. Strategy 1.1 says, "Develop a plan and/or policy for open space preservation, acquisition, use, and maintenance." So, it's not like we're not including the topic of acquisition and developing a plan or policy. So, I think the type is there. The "how," that it's going to be done via commission, is where I start. I agree. We have too many commissions for staff. They've given feedback multiple times that they'd like less commissions to manage. So, it's there, and we're not alluding to the fact that we're not going to potentially grow. And we just have to figure out how, what's the plan or policy to get it done.
Yeah, we might be able to have some of the current commissions consider Counselor Grady's concerns within the current structure of their committees.
Okay.
I'd like to see a find and replace here. There's many references to the regional park, and it needs to be defined as the park is named. The Glassford Dells Regional Park and Reserve.
Okay. I wasn't aware that that had been settled. Okay. Okay, so Counselor Grady had the recommendation. We've received feedback. We need to get consensus around that addition of the new strategy.
Specifically what? His request to have a committee?
His request to have a new strategy created or put back in the plan, creating an open space advisory committee.
That's correct.
Can we include "may" or "shall" in that and not "required"?
Yeah, we could say, "Consider the creation of."
Mr. Mayor, point of order. I think we have close to 30 customer comment cards at three minutes. That means we need to allocate some time for the, not customers, excuse me. It's what I did all my life, for residents.
You're noted. Your concerns are noted.
Okay. So, can we get consensus on whether or not we include Counselor Grady's request for, "Consider the creation of an open space advisory committee"?
Okay. More? Counselor Moore?
Oh.
I'm in favor of leaving the plan as it is.
So, is that a yes?
Yeah, we should put that back in. It was in there originally, so it should be back in there.
Okay. Obviously, Grady, you're supporting it. Counselor, Mayor Protam, you're a yes. I'm a no. Counselor, oh, two noes. Gamboge?
I reject every change up until the start of the last meeting.
So, I'll take that as a no. Counselor Montoya?
I'm with Ted.
So, I'll take that as a no. Or a yes. What is that?
That would be a yes, since it was included in the original.
Okay.
All right, we'll put that one back in.
I mean, yes or no? Please. Thank you.
Any other changes before I very quickly move on? Okay, so, the consensus that I received on the changes that were discussed, as well as leaving each of these sections in, on that note, we're going to move forward to the next big chapter, the Great Places and Neighborhoods. This section begins on page 45 of your packet, and it ends on page 58. As we talked about during the map conversation, the James Deepwell family had recommended a slight change in our future designation. Let me get there. Page 47 of your packet, there was a recommendation to add simple verbiage that expands on state statute requirements for area-specific plans, as well as the controlling planning, underlying land use map. So, in a letter that staff received from them, they requested an addition at the, again, page 47, second paragraph at the end, they recommend including a statement, "However, in no case shall the designated residential density be less than one dwelling unit per acre, per ARS," and then it provides the citation. Staff has no problem with that. It's the law, so we ran it by legal as well. We have no issues with that change. Can I get consensus on adding that to the text? Wonderful. Right off the bat. Thank you, ladies. Okay, I'm going to just move on, move on forward there. Again, throwing this out there, let's talk about the elements, the different sections within this chapter, and yeah, kick it off.
Counselwoman Ferworth?
Thank you. I had a question on page 52. Some of the things you have here, you're bounding yourself to the year you're going to get stuff done. So, in this case, it says, "The 2025 Historic Master Plan." You know, and I know we talked about it in the 2026 budget. So, is it necessary that we put dates? Because one of them before said, "SIMPO 2024's Plan." Complete SIMPO's 2024 Plan. I'm like, I think we're past that. So, could we remove some of these dates so that it gives you the flexibility of when you're actually going to get it done?
I'm fine with that, and maybe just a reference to when we were working on them in case there are, because this is a 10-year document, there may be another update being contemplated.
Exactly. That was my point.
Yeah, we can work on that.
Okay. Page 53, there was some public comments on Goal Number 2 at the top of the page. And the comment was to remove the word "responsible" because that's in the eye of the beholder. And I just, to avoid swirl, I'm like, "Enhance recreation opportunities." I think that's a really good sentence. And then there was concern about that recreation would conflict with wildlife needs and that we should put people first. And honestly, I think this is not about preventing people from recreating on our lakes. This is about that animals need a place to get a drink, and fish need a place to spawn. And occasionally, we should protect them like we do the eagles, too, to not have humans all around them. So, I just wanted, you know, if you could somehow give a little comment about wildlife needs, because they were saying that it made it seem like humans' needs were first, and I'm like, no, we're just taking care of everybody's needs.
Okay. Is there a recommendation to amend that statement?
Maybe say, example, drinking zones, fish spawning. We're not being ridiculous, blocking out sections of the lake permanently, you know, because we don't want people to recreate. So, I'm just addressing...
The specific wildlife needs.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Counselwoman Ferworth provided two amendments to the text. Can I get consensus on those, removing the word "responsible" from Goal 2 on the top of page 53, and then just expanding on what wildlife needs are? Thank you, Counselor Montoya.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion in this section?
Well, on page 53, again, you're talking about the new regional park, and again, that should be the Glassford Dells Regional Park.
Okay.
Oops, I have another.
Counselwoman Ferworth?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On the top of page 54, Strategy 1.4, I love all of it, but I wanted to end with and connect existing neighborhoods to local commercial services. Because this was incentives about new developments, and it got you in that mindset of this is about new developments. And I also think we're still working on these things, trail systems, open spaces, sidewalks, et cetera, to connect neighborhoods to local. So, I didn't want to think people think this was only for new.
Gotcha. Okay. Recommendation for an amendment at the top of page 54? Can I get consensus around that? Okay. All right.
And then Strategy 1.5, work with SIMPO on the Active Community Act Up Plan. Could we answer in that strategy why and what it's in it for Prescott residents that we do this effort? Because it assumes everyone in the public understands what the Act Up Plan is, and I just thought a few more explanation words so people, when they're reading this and deciding to vote, know what they're voting for.
And you know, I had thought we had talked a little bit more about their Act Up Plan in there, so we can expand on a little bit of a description. Consensus on that minor addition? Great. Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions, comments, issues, concerns in this chapter, great places and neighborhoods?
Well, I have a problem with this strong focus on expanding bicycle transportation. There are places in the community where bicycle use is encouraged and capable of being provided. But we have major arterials in other streets where we've already taken all the right-of-way away, and it's just not safe to support bicycle use on some of these connector feeders and arterials. I would like to see it only encouraged where practical and limited possibilities due to restricted road widths. Because I think anytime you have a vehicle and a bicycle, the vehicle wins, and the bicyclist loses, and loses badly. So, there has to be a limited expectation of expanding bicycle transportation within the city. We should be pro-vehicle and not take pro-bicycle over vehicles. It's just not safe. I mean, I did hundreds of miles, probably thousands of miles of road biking when I was younger, and I saw many conflicts between bicycles and vehicles. And when that happens, bad things happen. So, I think the goal for promoting bicycle lanes and things like that has to be modified to be able to say where it's practical, but not wherever it can be expanded.
Gotcha.
I mean, that lane up on Rossar is an example of that. We never voted on that as a council. It was put in solely based upon the decision from the Pedestrian Bicycle and Traffic Advisory Committee. That's an advisory committee. But they seem to think that when they make a decision, it automatically becomes done. But there's people up there that, if you're on a bicycle, sometimes you have to go from one side of the street to the other because of where vehicles can park. And I think it wasn't well thought out, and it's an example of a really poorly designed bicycle transit route. And I think we just need to be more practical when it comes to supporting where, when, and for how much bicycle lanes can be utilized in the city.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Mayor. So, for counsel on page 56, I believe, Mr. Mayor, you're speaking to the pedestrian bicycle goals and strategies specifically, and the idea is to communicate the encouragement where practical. Is there any other specific direction to staff as how we can change the text that would be more in line with what you're thinking?
I don't know if anybody on this council has ever even seen the 2015 Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan.
I know one of you has.
Yeah?
Yeah, Lois asked me to send it to you.
I know what they were talking about. So, we really do need to update it.
So, Mr. Mayor made some comments recommending changes to the section, pedestrian bicycle circulation, specific to making the goals and strategies more encouraging where practical and safe.
Yes.
Okay. Is there consensus among counsel?
No.
Grady? What is that? Is that a yes or a no? Yes. Can you tell me? Yes?
Yes.
Ferworth, yes?
No.
Gamboge and Montoya, default, no. Yes.
Okay. Moving right along. So, this section, again, ends on page 58. Any other questions, comments, issues, concerns from counsel?
Counselwoman Ferworth?
Yeah, on page 56, we talk about that we have a PBTA committee. Then there's a sentence that says, "Invite other civic groups to provide assistance in improving our ranking." And then further down in Strategy 1.3, it says, "Maintain current league status," which I'm assuming is ranking, "while considering pursuit." And I kind of viewed that as everything else that we have in here, that we'd evaluate the cost impacts requirements, and we'd make a decision. So, I like it down in 1.3. I just don't agree with it being up there as it's a done deal that we are going to work on improving our ranking.
Comments on the floor? Consensus with modifying the third paragraph on page 56? And I would imagine just striking the last sentence there. Is that... Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Consensus?
Can you tell me? Yes?
Okay.
More?
No.
No, Grady? Yes.
All right. Okay. What other comments?
And now we're going into dark sky.
Yes, sir.
Well, I, for one, like to support dark sky. I want to make a community that thought we were going to require retrofitting. And we're not going to force people into changing their light fixtures. But I think for new residential construction, being able to keep a dark sky type of downward-focused light fixture is a good thing. Counselor Moore?
Not just residential, but also commercial, new.
We already have that.
Right. Commercial's included.
Yeah, but I just want the public to know that, because you're talking about not retrofitting.
Yes, sir. And again, those code changes would come forward to counsel when staff receives direction that you want to begin that process. receives direction that you want to begin that process. So again, it would be an open meeting with those code changes. Any other amendments to the dark sky section? There are no amendments to the dark sky section. Are there any other comments on this section?
Councilwoman Furrworth?
Very similarly to what we did in some other sections, where you say investigate the principles of dark sky communities, and then evaluate the implications, costs, code changes, et cetera, and bring it for a council decision. So it's a business decision on what we're doing and who it affects. I just thought.
Thank you.
In the same kind of a format we've used in some of the other sections. Thank you.
You got it. And since that's consistent with what we did elsewhere, we'll just go ahead and make that addition. Any other questions, comments, issues, concerns? Again, this section goes through page 58 midway.
Well, I'd like to strike the entire reference to Tree City. Maintaining a tree board of department, having a community tree ordinance, spending at least $2 per capita on urban forestry, you know, all of those just increase government oversight. And let's face it, some trees are good, some trees are not good. I mean, I know when I was dealing with Mayor Oberg, and he was working with the county, trying to see if there was a way to reduce the amount of junipers. Junipers suck up so much water, it's incredible. So we certainly wouldn't want to have more junipers going in. And even pinyon pines and things like that have to be limited in how many per acre to have a healthy forest. And we're constantly trying to get the police fire department to get people to firewise their homes and reduce the number of trees, or at least separate them from one tree to another. So having this support for Tree City USA, I think is just a major mistake. Councilwoman Furrworth?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that this swirl has been there for previous general plans. And this is, and I said it at the last meeting, so I'll say it again, I like leaving the goal one there. I would again add everything that we've added in terms of evaluating costs, pros, cons, implications, blah, blah, blah. And then we make a decision with all the facts. I believe we won't pursue it, but I could be wrong with the next council. But let's get this thing, let's evaluate it and make a decision so it doesn't keep swirling. So I'm okay with leaving it in as long as we add that we're going to do a business-based decision and make a decision once and for all.
All right, we have two comments on the floor.
Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. As you might imagine, I'm totally and fully in support of leaving this in. I think it's absolutely critical that we leave it in. And the mayor's absolutely right, there are good trees and bad trees. Juniper happens to be a good tree, it's native. It's not an invasive species like Siberian elm. So we need to have education on what trees are good and what trees are bad, and focus on the good trees. You know, we've done a very poor job, I think, as a city. Siberian elm has taken over. We could have Arizona sycamores and Arizona walnuts and desert willows, and you know, beautiful Gooding willows and Fremont cottonwoods that are all native, all natural, and good for the environment, and good for nature. It's just a matter of education. We need to leave it in.
All right, two in favor of leaving it as is, and with Lois's, right, with, yep.
Well, if we could take out all of the strategies and just say, review of framework criteria for Tree USA and possible designation, then we could look at what would work and what wouldn't work.
Are you implying the text that's just above that section, where it talks about the framework of the Tree City USA program, sir?
Right, yeah.
Okay. So, okay, do we have consensus around amending the text just above the goal section, where we would just remove the four points, and it would still just include basic information? The goal will stay. The idea is to just remove the framework and the requirements that are stated above.
I think if we just add what Lois was recommending, that solves the problem, and we move forward.
I've got two in favor of that idea.
Well, I would vote against the whole section. But since I'm going to get outvoted here, then at least I can, I don't know, put a Band-Aid on it and say the goal could remain.
I'm opposed to it myself. This has turned out to be, especially in a desert community like ours, and I've seen what this did in Phoenix, at great cost to the community, going back and removing all these trees they thought was the answer to everything. I'm going to give you, cottonwood is a perfect example. We have no control over what Lowe's and Home Depot brings into our community, unfortunately. I think that's how these Siberian elms got here. There are states, Georgia, for example, they brought in a vine that's choking out all the natural. Do we really need to spend money and time on this when it isn't working? I mean, I'm not in favor of having it in there. That's just my thought on it. We can't control it to the extent it needs to be controlled. Eric, I hear you complain about those Siberian elms. I've got them in my yard, and I can't get rid of them. I mean, one tree produces five gallons of seeds that wash down into the creek. I mean, this is.
I'm picking out hundreds every spring, hundreds and hundreds of trees.
So now we're going to promote something we can't even control? People are going to go to Home Depot and buy 50 more Siberian elms. I'm just not in favor of that being in this plan. I'm sorry, can't support it.
So it sounds like two against the entire section, and three in favor of just minor change to the goal. And then two on that end that are opposed to all changes.
To defaults, yeah.
Okay, I'm quite welcome, sir. So I'm not sure I have consensus, and I don't know what council's direction is to staff for this section.
I don't know.
Right. Okay, moving on. Page 58 starts the economic competitiveness and prosperity section, and it goes through page 85 of your packets. Questions, comments, issues, concerns. This is one of the largest sections. Does contain all of our, a lot of our land use and housing in the airport?
Councilwoman Furrworth?
Head one addition on the page 65, second to the bottom paragraph. Challenges, so this is referring to downtown. Challenges in the coming year include responding to changes in ownership, blah, 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 providing adequate circulation. I would like to say sufficient parking and consistent parking management, because we have heard it again and again and again. And with more businesses coming into downtown, the parking situation, one garage is insufficient. So I would like to add that as a challenge.
So that would.
Just keeping our parking garage clean and maintained and safe.
So it would read, providing adequate circulation, comma, sufficient parking, comma, consistent parking management, et cetera. Okay? Minor addition there, everybody okay with that? Yep? Okay?
Mayor Proton?
I'd like to add one more word in there, required parking. We tend to be letting all these developments come in without the required parking, and I'm 100% opposed to that.
So that would just be a new comma, required parking, sufficient, okay. Everyone okay with that addition? Okay. All right, any other questions, comments, issues, concerns with this whole chapter? Okay, I'm seeing.
Mayor Proton, do you have another comment? Councilwoman Furrworth?
Thank you, Mayor. In the area of page 67, when we get into employment sector goals, we used to have, well, we refer to it in page number three, that we have a Prescott Economic Development Strategic Plan, and we're going to insert a link. But there's a whole lot of really good stuff in there related to employment sector goals, and it's gone. And then I got to page 68, in page 68 or, yeah, all the way halfway down the page, all of a sudden, there's some employment sector goals. So the sequence threw me for a bit because I knew we had it. But what I really wanted more in this employment sector goals area is more that came straight from our economic development strategic plan. And so we have a, right now, we have a document there that is a NACOG chart of employment sectors. But we've done so much work with laying out our strategy. And on page 25 of our strategy, we have a really cool vision statement. And page 26, we lay out five goals that we're going to do. And so I'm wondering why we aren't inserting the approved goals we're going to do in our employment sector goals?
There's a couple of ways to look at it. We do reference that economic development strategic plan. And strategic plans are on a shorter term than the general plans, and they're more specific and operational. Again, this one, for a general plan, it's more, you know, large, large format. So we could add a snippet, a snapshot, as I know the Economic Development and Tourism Office usually puts together some really beautiful infographics and things like that. So we could include a snapshot of what that economic.
Let me give you why I have a problem with the way it's currently written. If you look at employment sector goal, goal one says, we are going, we, the city, are going to create quality job opportunities. There was a lot of public comments saying that's not our job as a city. If I go to our economic development strategic plan, it's very clear we're establishing sector partnerships, including businesses, education, other groups, to fuel these sectors that we're focused against. So I really, the more I was like, no wonder the public sent in some comments about that's not your job. And I'm like, you're right, we haven't even said that's our job. We're doing it differently, and we're organized in such a way that the city is facilitating, we're not creating jobs. So it's a minor difference, but I think it makes a big difference to how this is viewed by the public. And it aligns with what we already said, how we're going to approach it.
So on page 68, the employment sector goals, goal number one, create quality jobs. So is the recommendation change the word create to maybe facilitate, or?
We say in the thing, we say establish sector partnerships to promote, facilitate, I forget exactly the phrases, but I have the copies of things. So it's just for me.
Maybe swapping the goal in the general plan for that one that's proposed in the economic strategic plan?
Correct, correct. Because I, again, there was a couple of comments that were like, this is not your job as a city, is to create jobs.
Gotcha. Consensus around that, swapping out goal?
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Say you disagree.
Okay, okay.
More?
Yes, sir, we've got, yeah.
And on page 68, under housing affordability and workforce goals?
Yes.
It says, please refer to the housing section starting 109. We don't have a page 109.
You're absolutely right, sir. We will make sure.
There's a PT 109, but that's different.
We will make sure that that reference is updated. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns with this section spanning through page 85 of your packet?
Mayor Proton?
On page 72, under development impact fees.
Yes.
You know, we just spent all that time educating the public, educating the council, re-implementing development impact fees so that growth and development can help pay for itself. Why are we putting a sentence in there that consideration must also be given to the potential negative effects of impact fees on development? When we just established that if we don't have the impact fees, that substantial negative effect goes on to the taxpayer. I would like to see that completely removed.
That sentence?
That's page 72, paragraph three.
It's in the middle.
Consideration.
Mm-hmm. Middle of the development impact fees paragraph. It's the second to the last sentence in that paragraph.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we established we have to have those impact fees.
We do. They're statutorily regulated, and every five years, a independent consultant provides us with data that sets those rates. So we can.
So why are we offering to consider, consideration must also be given to the potential negative effects of impact fees on development? That's a given. It's going to make the cost rise, but it's either the developer pay for it, or we pay for it. I think that sentence needs to be removed.
I don't think we have a problem with that.
Okay. You can leave the Prescott impact fees were last reviewed and updated in 2024, and that link you have there is fine, but that sentence, to me, just invites problems.
Consensus around that?
Yeah, we can take that.
Deletion? Okay, all right. Any other comments going through page 85 of your packet? We're over halfway.
Councilwoman Furrworth?
I don't understand the very next paragraph on page 72, the very last line. Building permit fees are reviewed regularly. I understand that. And then the next sentence is, and the cost of new residential construction should be reviewed periodically. Why are we, why would we be reviewing the costs of new residential restructuring? Like, I understand if we were to say, and planning application fees need to be reviewed regularly, or, you know, it's the previous sentence all referring to our costs. So I don't, I didn't understand why we were working at the other sentence.
I think it's just understanding what the costs of new development are. Again, the permitting fees are based off of international building code, and those are set.
I have no problem with what you just said.
Sure.
Understanding the costs of development. That's different than renewing permit fees and going right into a topic that it looks like we're going to renew, you know, so I I.
I think it's just a best practice, maybe?
Yeah.
Like, consider what our fees are, what costs are, but we can absolutely strip it.
Break them apart and just say periodically, understanding the cost of construction in the areas, you know, is a.
Sure, separate sentences.
Separate sentence, so they're, because they're different topics. Thank you.
Okay, it's a minor.
Yeah, I can agree with that.
Dramatical change. Okay, any other comments, questions on this section through page 85?
I believe, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Councilwoman Furrworth?
I believe the very 72, the second to the bottom, it says, the exception to this policy would be where an overriding public benefit is involved justifying taxpayer investment in infrastructure. And I think a lot of people are going to go, what does that mean? So I went right to the very next page, page 73. And again, it says, in cases of overriding public, it may be appropriate for the city to absorb some or all the cost of infrastructure or services to accommodate new development. And I would like to give examples, because we've talked about them, so the public should know what we're talking about. You know, if we got another Costco, you know, coming in?
Sure.
That would be, so I'd say, example.
Costco, everybody loves Trader Joe's.
Costco coming to town. They paid off the impact, the cost of services, and I think it was under three years with the tax revenue increase. So I think saying that, and then, or to upgrade essential services. And again, I was like, is that like Prop 478 for public safety? Because if we didn't, if we didn't, we weren't able to absorb continuing to grow. So I just think if we could add some examples, because I think the public is going to be like, why should we be thinking about any of this? Shouldn't they just pay for it, period? And I do think there's going to be some exceptions, rare and few, but worthy.
Right. And all those have to be negotiated and approved by council.
And maybe you also say that, that these would all be. And maybe you also say that, that these would all be negotiated as part of the, yeah.
Through the development agreement process, right? Yeah, we can work with our public works friends to come up with some good examples. Any, I'd like to receive consensus from council on just kind of expanding that paragraph to make it a little more clearer for the public. Okay?
I agree.
It might also be beneficial to put in, this is for commercial development somewhere in that sentence, not residential necessarily.
It could be, it's council's discretion. Any other comments or questions on this section as a whole through page 85?
Councilwoman Ferworth.
The bottom of 73, there's, folks are concerned on strategy 1.3 there. Consider the use of bonding options for major capital. I have no problem with what you have until the word "transportation-related," because there's a lot of public concern that we would go about creating a taxpayer-funded busing program. And so I have no problem if we were to change that to say, "Traffic, roadway, highway, downtown parking," you know, if we could be a little clearer about what transportation-related improvements are, because taxpayer-funded busing is not on the top of the hit parade.
Yeah, we had contemplated maybe this being too strategic and looking at potentially taking it out. This by, I don't know why, but it's included as a required element in state statute, this specifically cost of development element. So I'm scanning state statute right now to see if, if there are requirements, talks about public, so we can definitely look at that.
I had no problem with the strategy, I just, "Transportation-related," I would like to, it's, it could take people to the point that they say no, because it's not clear enough.
Okay. Consensus on removing strategy, or, I'm sorry, in strategy 1.3, just removing the word "transportation-related"?
My proposal was actually to change it to roadway, parking, highway, you know, change, give some examples versus the generic "transportation-related." Because we may very well have to, if we want to expand parking, we may have to bond road network and parking, road network and parking, there we go.
Okay. Road network and parking. Consensus?
I'm good with that.
All right. Any other questions in this section, or comments?
Congresswoman Protem.
Chelsea, I did want to compliment you all for whoever reworked the workforce housing section, did a very good job on that.
Thank you, I'll pass the compliments to the team.
Yeah, I'm very happy with they, with what they did, it was, it's very fact-based and to the point, and a lot of the suggestions that the taxpayer take over and pay for this problem is removed, thank you.
All right. This section goes through page 85 of your packet, yes?
On the bottom of page 81, second to the bottom paragraph, I just didn't understand if we were missing, it says, "There are many vacant lots scattered throughout."
Does seem like an incomplete sentence.
And I think it might be in the middle of the top of the next paragraph, but I would, didn't want to make that assumption, that it was just a formatting error, so-
Thank you, we'll correct that.
Okay.
Okay, we're up to page 81. Any other comments through the end of that section? I'm not hearing any. Oh, Lois, yes.
Sorry, strategy 3.3, consider regulatory incentives-
Is that on page-
83, sorry, thank you.
Okay.
Page 83, strategy 3.3. You talk about some of the things there, but I really appreciated the Workforce Housing Committee also coming back, that we're not only going to incent them, but we also need to protect them with regulatory tools such as deed restrictions, so that if we're going to build workforce housing, it sticks around for a long time. So that was the only other-
Just add deed restrictions.
Incentives, and then also the, you know, regulatory tools that protect workforce housing, to maintain workforce housing, I guess is what I'd say, to maintain it going forward.
Such as deed restrictions, right. Consensus on that? Okay?
I agree.
All right. We're almost through the end of this section. Any other comments through page 85? I'm not seeing any. So we're going to move on. Okay, it's our second to the last section, y'all. We've got the community quality section, beginning on page 85 of your packets. This is smaller, it goes through page 92, and you'll see up on the screen the major sections that are included in this chapter.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, mayor. On the bottom of page 86, "Safe community, provide a superior level service," I agree with everything written there. And then I also would like to add, "Through sufficient staffing and employee retention."
And I apologize, what strategy was that?
Goal one.
Oh, goal one, okay. Through sufficient-
Staffing and employee retention, as a goal. And then in goal two, you talk about law enforcement facilities, and I'm cool with everything there, but nowhere in that paragraph did I see the evidence facility. Is that implied with 2.2, or is that another facility?
That would be implied with 2.2, so anything that encompasses the police activity, including their evidence and other facility needs.
Okay. If we could say evidence, because I think that's what everybody has been talking about in town when they voted, we were talking for substations and evidence facilities, so-
Including evidence, I'll get with the police chief, and we'll come up with a good plan for that. Okay. That changed to strategy 2.2, consensus, clarification? Okay. All right. Other questions, comments on this section? Again, through page 92 of your packets.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Sorry, there's a lot of swirl in this community on page 89 about the Rowley P. Simmons Community Center. And a lot of people are very upset with the renaming of the adult center to the center, and so I, I just thought we did a very nice job of articulating that the Rowley P. Simmons is the full building, and that there's two nonprofits operating each half of it, so I appreciated that. But are they the adult center, or are they the center? I just didn't know what their LLC status was.
Sure, I did look them up on Corporation Commission, it is the Adult Center of Prescott Inc., their marketing is the center.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, mayor. Chelsea, I hate to go back, but I know the last meeting I had asked you to reconsider taking out these reduced parking for any project that comes forward, and you did a really good job, but you did miss one on strategy 3.3, page 83. As I stated before, we have such a severe parking problem in the downtown area.
So the last sentence, "The parking requirement incentives should be accompanied by thorough evaluations and analysis of conditions and needs of the surrounding neighborhood," you want to change that?
Yeah, well, I'd just like to have you take reduced parking as an incentive out. We just went through this with the Marina Apartments. I had probably 100 people that live in the downtown area, myself included, they're very upset about this. We're going to give away the requirement for parking to any development that comes down there, that, that's just going to make a problem we have worse. So I am totally opposed to taking that out as an incentive.
Okay, so-
You did remove several of them, but strategy 3.3, on page 83-
Got it.
The second sentence, it says, "Consider regulatory incentives such as expedited, expedited review, plan review, density bonuses, reduced parking, or setback requirements." I don't have a problem with any of those things, except for the parking requirement.
Okay, consensus around removing the two words "reduced parking" from page 83 under strategy 3.3? The way it is? I'm getting consensus that, that just leave it the way it is, and again, the reduction, this would have to be approved by council. Any kind of incentive program would, would come forward for this body to review.
But I thought that we already established that that isn't true, because we, now we've offered an administrative change, so we don't see everything. The council does not see everything that comes through here with the ability of your department to make an administrative change, and one of them is the parking requirement.
So regulatory incentives that, that would be proposed by the workforce housing, specific to housing affordability, I believe that would come forward to council as a package, as, hey, we want to, to do this, and it would be a case-by-case. So I can't say that council would see every single thing, but you would approve whether or not this moves forward based on the incentive package that gets offered out to developers.
And how are you going to handle this inside of a PAD, a Planned Area Development? Are you going to be giving that away? If you have a planned area development, and let's say Phase 7 and 8 are not billed out, and they decide to do workforce housing project, are you going to violate the rules of the HOA and the on-street parking and overrule those CCNRs by offering this? This is a problem to me. It doesn't work that way.
Right.
So, I mean, obviously, if I get overruled on this, that's fine, but I'm just telling you, this is a problem. It is a practical problem.
Sure.
And I don't like to even offer something that's going to open up a can of worms.
Right, and it would have to be evaluated and analyzed on a case-by-case, because there, there isn't a one-size-fits-all with, with parking, it's based on use, it's based on location, it's based on many things. So it would have to be looked at and really evaluated before it, it got approved.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, we could just take the word "reduced" out of there, and then leave parking requirement incentives would be accompanied by a thorough evaluation analysis. So there may be a case where it's valuable, and other cases where it wouldn't be. And if we evaluate and analyze it, then we make a decision.
Remove the word "reduced"?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on the section, community quality, ending on page 92?
Looking on page 92, under healthcare concerns, second paragraph, sentence, second, sentence, there has been little incentive for prospective, it should be prospective, nurses and doctors coming to the area.
Okay.
And then when you're talking about ambulance services, we know the priority ambulance has been renamed effective May 6th to Copper State Ambulance Service.
Thank you. We'll update that with a new name. Any other questions on this section? We're almost done. All right, hearing none, we're going to move forward to the last and final chapter, as council had consensus last time. So the major plan amendments, this is a one-page chapter, so it's on page 93 of your packets. And again, apologies, the table that was included in the PowerPoint that got in your packets was the old one, that had the, the very low removed, so this that's displayed is the most current, that was received council consensus in March meeting. So any questions, changes? Do we have consensus on this? I'm seeing some headbobs, thank you. Consensus on this major plan amendments?
Okay, I haven't spent years on planning and zoning like most of my friends up here have, so I'm going to ask the stupid question. Commercial. I get a lot of feedback that people get upset when we lose commercial to houses. And so I don't understand minor versus major, so that we keep commercial and put houses other places. And so I'm just confused with, what does that mean? What's the implication of minor?
Sure. So again, this guides the process by which general plan amendments are made. So a minor amendment to the general plan is something that does not require the full gamut of the general plan major. So it would not require the 60-day public comment period, or the five out of seven vote of council. A minor amendment is required to go through planning and zoning, and then on to council, but it doesn't have the, the broader need of a general plan approval. So when you look at this table, the way it works is, when you're making a more substantial change, or you're going to impact a lot that property size is larger, we want to make sure that everybody knows about it, and that we have more public input. So the very low to a higher use, like, as you can see, the very low column, if it was to move to a medium-high density, and it's 10 acres plus, we would want the folks in that area and the community to know, hey, we're going from a very low use to a medium-high. So that's how the table works. And as far as commercial is concerned, when you're going from a, a higher use like commercial down to residential, that's, that's seen as a lower impact to the homes there in, in the vicinity. What I think you're talking about is-
No, my point is economic development. How do we not lose businesses? How do we keep people near their houses, going to commercial businesses, and not having to drive down Willow Creek in 89, and all those things, to get commercial? So where we get commercial and we put it on the plan, I just want to make sure we're doing everything possible-
Yeah.
-to protect that spot.
Those are really important, important thoughts.
And that's why I was, I said, you know, I think that's why we just keep losing commercial-
Right.
And we're not doing a really good job of protecting it, and I guess it comes down to who's on council matters.
It's council negotiations via development contracts. This is a tool to make sure the public is aware when things are going to impact them and their surrounding neighborhood. What you're speaking about is more of a contract negotiation and needing to see more commercial development. Important thoughts, though? Any other questions?
Should we reference Proposition 401, the private property rights component of the state constitution? Because if you take commercial and you downzone it to any type of a residential, you lose the value of that property, and the owner has to be compensated. So that has an impact on the ability to even consider a chart like this when it's a commercially designated area.
So the major plan amendment process would be initiated by the, the property owner, they would be wanting to, to make the change. And again, this isn't zoning necessarily, well, it's not zoning at all, it is a, a public process. I guess I'd ask Joe if there's a necessi, if there's a need to reference that proposition?
I don't know, I would say no, but when it comes to this type of, what do we have to do here with major and minor plan amendment? The statutes are clear, we do have to define what is major, we do have to define what is minor, and then the statutes also lay out what the process is for that is. And I think the committee did a pretty good job of defining what's minor and major, and it's up to council whether to change it, but I don't think we need to reference the statute that was passed.
And if it was initiated by the property owner who wanted that to happen, then they would waive any 401 impact when they-
They would. And almost, and they can waive it and consent to it. And in almost all cases, we actually have that written out as part of agreements.
Thank you.
Okay, that's fine then.
Any other questions on this section? Thank you. With that, that concludes my presentation. And I know we have public comment, but any final direction to staff as we need to compile all these changes, put it in the pretty format, and get it to council in advance of the June 24th meeting? Hearing none?
Comments, and I'm sure the audience is very appreciative and wants to applaud. But I'll ask you to refrain from that when we start taking public comment. So I think we can begin that at this time, can we not?
Roger Fritz?
My name is Roger Fritz. I am a minister at the Granite Peak Unitarian Universalist Church, which is located just behind True Value on Sunset and Whipple Street. We just completed, or in the process of completing, building a new sanctuary. I think True Value would be a great name for a church someday. I grew up in Phoenix, but I started coming to Prescott in the 1950s when my parents felt I needed to know what snow looked like. They bought a summer cabin off Idlewild Road in 1968. I helped my dad build a home off Copper Basin Road, and my family still owns that house. I love Prescott. This is a great place. I've read the draft copy of the City of Prescott 2025 General Plan, and I think it is excellent. You all do a really good job. The folks on the committees, all of the staff, you're great. I know it takes a great deal of time, and I want to say that I appreciate that you are caring so much about this community and working so hard to make this a good document. Thank you so much. I don't want to change anything. I just am here to speak in favor of the particular beginning, which is Prescott's road map, which has this sentence that says, "It's intended that people of all ages, races, national origins, sexual orientations, genders, religious, and disabilities can make use of Prescott's land and amenities without facing discrimination." I think this is a great statement. I am so glad it is in this document. As a religious leader, it reminds me of the Good Samaritan story, that we are going to love everybody, people of all different backgrounds. So I would say it's very important to keep that in there. And I ask you, if you get pressured to take it out, don't take it out. It's great. And the whole plan is great. And I understand the opinions of the council members who say, let's just approve it and move on. But you've made some good changes today, and I am looking forward to seeing this finalized, what, next week? You're going to vote to give it to the people, and then in the fall, they're going to vote it, and they're going to approve it, and it's going to have the support of everybody on the council, isn't it? It's a great document. You should be very proud of what you've done. Thank you.
Stephen Cook?
Pass. Pass, sir.
Cook.
Council members and mayor, I'm Stephen Cook. I live in Prescott and write a column called "Science Works" for the Daily Courier. My June 8th column praised how Councilman Gamboge praised his promotion of critical thinking skills that helped steer the council away from group think at a recent meeting. At your June 3rd meeting devoted to this plan, Councilwoman Furworth similarly stressed the importance of bringing data to decision-making as part of a rational thought-based process. Alas, during the public comments part of that meeting, we heard from a guy who apparently doesn't value data, reason, critical thinking. The previous night, his talk to a newly formed group opposing the plan connected it to a baseless conspiracy theory involving the United Nations. His pseudoscience credentials include operating a business devoted to the supposed healing power of crystals. Similarly, on June 3rd, we heard from a lady who identified as an elementary school science teacher and called for using a gold standard of science. Sounds good, except, as applied by the Trump administration, it prevents use of best available science and allows non-scientist political appointees like Robert Kennedy Jr. to squelch science-based conclusions they don't like. Not surprisingly, she went on to attack those who share the concerns of an overwhelming consensus of climate scientists. Anti-science prejudice isn't limited to ordinary folks. Back in 2017, the Prescott mayor cited the words of a lone non-climate scientist as a reason to ignore a petition Ralph Hess and I presented, signed by 1,000 people calling for climate action. And last year, the chair of the Plan Review Committee was similarly promoting misinformation in countering such voices. The hour is late, and we need to forge a compromised version of the plan that voters will approve. As a result, it's been cut by more than 100 pages. I can live with most of the cuts provided something like the following 54-word statement devoted to decision-making process is included in its introduction. In a world awash in misinformation, fake news, false claims, culture war prejudices, and baseless conspiracy theories, wherever possible, we will take steps to ensure that decisions City of Prescott planners and leaders make are not only consistent with this general plan, but are based on-
You have 30 seconds.
-facts, best available information, and best science-based practices. Two additional requests. First, retain the section on climate on pages 31 and 32 of the plan in the packet. Second, retain what was previously climate and energy goal number one, empower community members to make smarter energy choices through education. Thank you.
Stephen Polk, I did remove your card, though, since you said you passed. Thank you. Greg Murray?
You know, these guys ever get up in the morning or just before, or before you go to bed at night and say, what in the world was I thinking? I'm glad that you're doing what you're doing, so thank you. I support sending the March 25th draft version of the Prescott 2025 General Plan to the voters for approval with all of the voluntary elements, including the climate and energy section in Chapter 1. As we've pointed out several times, the Arizona statutes stipulate that all such elements are entirely appropriate for the general plan, even for communities of our size. Secondly, with the approval of most of the goals and strategies from previous versions, the draft that was included in the packet for today's meeting was only like 88 or so pages, far shorter than the typical 130 to 200-page general plans already adopted by cities of our size or even smaller. Moreover, the removal of the goals and strategies on ideological grounds remains misguided. It's a loss of valuable information about how to address the challenges and opportunities that are already identified in the narratives for each of the sections of the plan. So anybody who wants to address those challenges and opportunities over the next 10 years is going to have to reinvent that information that was provided before and has since been excised. The March 25th draft version of the plan was a result of over two years of careful work by city staff, the General Plan Review Committee, and interested citizens. And it also reflects feedback from an extensive public comment period. It should not be derailed at the 11th hour by a small special interest group that showed no prior interest. One more thing. Since the denial of climate change and the challenges that it poses for Prescott seems to have been a major motivation for removing so much of the 25-March draft, and since I'm a longtime educator with experience teaching about the Earth's climate system, I offer to teach a class about the science of this issue for interested people. So thank you.
Mary Lynn, I think it's Steenbeck, Steinbach? Robert Schkog?
Thank you for allowing me to express my opinion, and I'm standing here in favor of the passage of the general plan as written. After nearly 20 months of surveys, meetings, public speaking, and press releases, what we want is peace and understanding. It says in the Bible, Proverbs 4, Chapter 5, Proverbs 4, verse 7, that out of all you're getting, you need to get a good understanding. Jesus, in his ministry, often ministered to the marginalized groups in his community. Ronald Reagan has said, and I quote, "Peace is not the absence of conflict, it is the ability to handle conflict in a peaceful means," end quote. We may never understand each other. Unless you have a hidden disability, you may never know how I feel in this community. But what I am looking for with open hands is respect and understanding. And this, passage of this general plan is a first step towards that understanding. Thank you very much.
Martha Meister? Menster?
Good morning, or is it afternoon? My name is Martha Meister, and I've lived here in Prescott for 20 years. I support the general plan based on the careful development over several years with input from citizens and experts. And I feel that everyone's had an opportunity to have their views expressed if they chose to do that. A small politically motivated and funded group using current catchwords and phrases should not be allowed to derail all the good work that has gone into this plan. I think it's time for us to move forward and to put it to the voters. Thanks for your attention.
Kristin Kahl, or Law?
I support the consensus taken today on the sustainability and resiliency section on climate, but I do advocate bringing back one goal that was in the March 25 Plan, and that was on education. And this section is really vital for planning, adapting, and strengthening our city services, which is the definition of resiliency. And for anyone who sees the general plan as just a land-use document, understanding climate trends is crucial as it directly impacts land-use considerations such as flood planning, wastewater management, transportation design, and zoning and building codes. In addition, temperature and precipitation trends also impact key elements of our economy, such as agriculture and ranching, as well as tourism, as people come here to enjoy our lakes, our waters, our open space, and spend tourist dollars on lodging, dining, and shopping. And these trends also impact how our taxpayer dollars get allocated for city services. So for example, infrastructure needs. Do we need additional wells? Do we need deeper wells? Do we need more water treatment plants, more fire services? And our operational expenses around all of this, such as parks and recreation management, emergency response, affordable fire insurance, and of course, energy savings, which I'm very thankful that is in the current draft plan as a goal. That is critically important, and thank you for keeping that in. A year and a half ago, a citizen survey was put out as part of informing information for this general plan. And this survey starts with key findings, and I'm going to quote directly the very first key finding that was in this survey. Nine in 10 survey respondents identified the natural environment as an essential or very important area of focus in the next two years, placing it among residents' top priorities for Prescott. This ranking, and that's end quote, this ranking is just one point behind that of the economy, which was the top concern. And the data comes from 770 demographically representative respondents. So it's an important consideration. So the natural environment is clearly a part of our economy. It is part of what Prescott is. It's a powerful incentive for workplace recruiting, and it is the reason why many of us chose to live here. So we should keep the climate and the energy sections in the general plan, and I propose strengthening it by adding back that educational goal because it informs land-use planning. Thank you.
Eugene Fogner?
My name is Gene Fogner, and I presided in the area since 1987. Worked 19 years at Yawapai College, and many of my jobs have been in Prescott. And I just wanted to say I do support the inclusivity statements that you have elected to put in as-is into the introduction of the charter. And I have been privileged to be working with the MLK Committee for two years on this with you all. And so I want to support that. And also, along the way, some people did say, well, we don't see much discrimination happening in Prescott because it's everybody's hometown. And I would agree, it is everybody's hometown. I've always felt that way. But I was one of the people that was surveyed, and I have been discriminated and fired three times because I happened to want to buy a house with another man. And so I was fired for that and told to stay home and be quiet, and we'll just pay you your salary while you find another job after doing four years of good work. That happened again after four years of good work, to be let go because of living with another man who I've been with now for 43 years. And I continue to work for the rights of people, race, gender, all rights of all humans to be part of everyone's hometown. So I just wanted to say that I was one of those victims, and so you have heard from one, if you didn't hear from any others. There was a third job that had the same thing happen. But anyway, most of our public years in Prescott area have been good ones, and we feel mostly supportive. My husband directed the Prescott Valley Public Library successfully for 30 years, and we have raised a son who is succeeding. And we've always felt a part of everyone's hometown. But it's so important to keep this nondiscrimination language in the front of people in communities, I feel. And so thank you for adopting what you did adopt, and please continue to support that. And I want to thank the MLK Committee, and especially Robert Schkog and Jim Helbling and Judge Hess for helping us to craft this statement over the last few years.
Nancy Johnson?
Gene's a little taller than I am. My name is Nancy Johnson, and I am here in support of the general plan and to ask you to submit it to the public for voting as it was written. I am asking you to consider the importance of the nondiscrimination clause. As a white person, growing up in a community that looked very much like me, kind of like this one, not a lot of diversity, I did not realize the depth of discrimination and microaggressions people of color live with on a regular basis because it did not happen to me. And then I adopted six children, four of whom are black. I came to realize how difficult it can be to deal with discrimination for a person of color. It was and is disheartening to see how my children are sometimes treated, being followed in Walmart, to outright discrimination and racism. I could share many stories. It saddens me that my children need to always be vigilant of their surroundings simply due to the color of their skin. Due to these personal experiences, I have become more aware of the bigger picture of discrimination and the damage it causes. Sometimes, we as white people just don't see the issues. As this lovely community strives to become everyone's hometown, let's really mean everyone and include the nondiscrimination clause as-is. Let's become the community that we can be. Again, I ask you to put the general plan, including the nondiscrimination clause, before the voters. Thank you.
Jenna James?
It looks like I'm going to make it under the wire to say, good morning. My name's Jenna James. I'm here this morning as a representative for DEEP I’m here this morning as a representative for Deepwater Ranch. I do want to say we are supportive of the changes that you have asked directed city staff to do in regards to the land use map. I think it’s really important, especially as we’re talking about adding that new commercial corridor on 89 North on land that’s owned by Deepwater Ranch, that we’re talking about appropriate rooftops to support that commercial corridor. We can’t rely on traffic from Chino and Paulden to support commercial activity. We’re going to need the residential density around there to support that commercial activity as well. I think it’s also important, I think it’s a step in the right direction for encouraging that future growth to happen within Prescott city limits. If you’re going to go with one dwelling unit per acre, then whoever owns that land is better off developing in the county than working with the city and having the city get the tax benefits and the benefits of the water recharge. There’s a number of benefits that this city receives by increasing that to the low to medium density instead of what was proposed at the last meeting. I also think that it does a great job in directing city staff to plan for the future. If we have a reasonable residential density out there, then we’re not going to be caught being reactionary the way we were to public safety needs. We are going to be doing what the general plan is supposed to do, which is planning for the long-term future of Prescott. I also think it’s a step in the right direction in terms of the housing needs of our community. Large, single-family homes on one-acre lots is not going to do anything to solve our housing crisis within our community. And moving towards a more reasonable density is kind of putting our money where our mouth is when it comes to our workforce housing policies. So that’s all I have to say. Thank you.
Barbara Camp?
I pass.
I’m Jim Helbling. I’m a resident of Prescott, and I want to encourage the council to pass the general plan as written to the voters. We all know now how much work has gone into this, years of work, and you’ve put a lot of work into it since you’ve got it in your hands. I’m aware of that through discussions with several council members and what we heard today. And this document is a compromise, but it’s a compromise that has taken into account input from the public and a lot of community organizations. So I urge you to please do not deny the public the opportunity to choose. That’s basically what we’re asking here. Give us the opportunity to vote on this. And since I’m up here, I have a question for any of the climate deniers in the crowd. I looked at NASA.gov to see the percentage of the world’s leading climatologists that agree that climate change and global warming is an issue. And 97% of them agree that this is something that needs to be taken into account in terms of our development. And so my question to the climate deniers is, should I believe these people that have dedicated their lives to this, or you?
I don’t know really what to say. I appreciate truth and science and best practices because I was a science teacher, and I taught that. I appreciate the fact that we are a constitutional republic, and I appreciate the fact that I saw the rolling eyes. I appreciated every minute that Lois listened to the people and brought it up. So I appreciate the fact that we are allowed to not micromanage, but to have the ability to say, because we elected you to do what you’re doing, and once you’ve done it, we have the right to look at it and make the comments based on that. Because we’re not sitting here with you doing what you’re doing. And I want to respect what other people have said, but they specifically said about me, that I taught science and the climate change. And I was the first one in Michigan to jump on recyclable stuff with plastic with it all because I knew about land use. And so I worked hard. And to be told that I don’t know what I’m talking about to me when I only had three minutes the other day to say something. So I just appreciate the fact that you want to go with pros and cons, that you want to go with all the facts, that you want to listen to us because we do have something to say because you were voted to take us into consideration when you do it. So I didn’t like some of the comments and the rolling eyes because I appreciated everything that Lois did to listen and take into consideration. She didn’t go, “Oh, well, they’re right, and I’m doing this.” She didn’t do that. She just listened, and I appreciated that fact. And I understand the one thing was 770 people out of 47,000 were surveyed. Okay, great. I think that’s a small percentage. I’m a math person too, and I agree that that gives you a guide, but you don’t just say, “Well, we developed a plan in the two and a half years, and we’re going to do what we want to do.” That’s not the way I look at it.
You have 30 seconds.
You did a great job. You tried to do the best that you could, but when it comes down to us getting to read it and look at it and give our, not opinions, because I do look at facts, give facts about it, I appreciate that they were listened to and not that I’m micromanaging you. So I appreciate it. I had more to say because I do have how the brain best learns, and I look at the truth and health of things, not just the money. And I appreciate that the money’s looked at because we need that. So thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Prescott, everybody’s hometown. I love those words. From the general plan, these words are, “The city of Prescott is a city that values the quality of life for all its inhabitants. Prescott is home to people of varying backgrounds, cultures, and perspectives. This culture diversification keeps the city vibrant and is an asset we should all embrace. As such, it is intended the people of all ages, race, national origin, sexual orientation, genders, religions, and disabilities can make use of Prescott’s land and amenities without facing discrimination or harassment. This goal is consistent with the Prescott and vision statements. I urge you to take those words to heart and keep them in the general plan. Thank you.
Hello, counsel. Thank you for your time. My name is Chloe Beazer. I’m a resident of Prescott and an Arizona native. My partner is originally from Prescott, and early in our dating 10 years ago, he brought me here where I immediately felt at home. We were lucky and hardworking enough to be able to choose to move here and just finish building our first home. I want to echo others in asking counsel to move forward with the general plan without changes to the public vote. Surrounding communities have comprehensive general plans that are double the length of the current proposed plan for Prescott. The general plan communicates to its citizens and those visiting the area the priorities of the community. Our city deserves a comprehensive plan that includes more than just what is simply required to check a box that we did the job. I want to express my concern with losing language that is inclusive and inviting to diverse groups of people. If Prescott is going to carry the title of everyone’s hometown, then why wouldn’t we make sure that our general plan held language specifically inviting every type of person to come to our town? Everyone who visits Prescott deserves to feel the way that I, a cisgender white woman, felt in my first visit at home. Lastly, I want to genuinely thank Councilman Moore for holding us as citizens accountable for not being involved in the development process of the general plan earlier, but showing up at the last moment to express concerns once it was done. Thank you.
No plan is perfect, but this is a well-thought-out plan, and I’d like to see it go on the
By the way, you did pronounce my name correctly, and most people like to call me Creedy. Yes, I’m Janice Creed. You folks met me. I was here to speak on Tuesday morning, so I don’t want to reiterate too much of what I’ve already said. But I came here with a few other things to say. My Native American name is Songwayiash, and that means strong-hearted woman. So it is with that native voice that I come to speak here to you as well today. As I said on Tuesday, I support the general plan being, including the nondiscrimination statement that I spoke of, representing the MLK Committee as I did on Tuesday. I addressed some of the arguments against it, you know, that this doesn’t belong in a land use document. But again, the people are part of the land, and the land is part of the people. This is really, really important. I addressed the issue of possibly losing federal funding, and I said something along the lines of, “Well, let’s just quit calling it everybody’s hometown,” and, you know, cave to that. Or we could take the high road and build our resilience so that we’re representing all people, and everyone can see, just from this simple statement, that that is our intention. The third argument was the public had made it known that it would probably be voted down if we put that statement in there. I disagree. Some people feel that way, many people do not, and that language is, you know, the number one symbol of our culture, of any culture, actually. So, “One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.” It’s kind of a summation of what I had to say on Tuesday. The other thing I wanted to say today is that I am a sustainability educator. I earned my degree from Prescott College several years ago in a brand-new PhD program. I was in their first cohort. Nothing is perfect. Everything can’t be figured out at once. It has evolved so much in 16 years, it’s unbelievable. But when I look at your general plan and I see the sustainability initiatives, the climate change, the land use, the water use, all those things are absolutely imperative. And so I applaud you on that, working so hard on that. I want you to keep that because it’s really, really, really important, not only for us, but for future generations, to think seven generations hence, so that our great-great-great-great-grandchildren and everybody’s great-great-great-grandchildren has a beautiful place like Prescott to live and thrive and work together as a community. Thank you kindly.
Hello, my name is Terry Sappio, and I’m the chairman of the General Plan Review Committee, as you all know. And I just want to say, well, addressing Ted Gamboji’s comment from last week, that a camel is a horse designed by committee. Well, I think you all have put in many, many long hours into turning this camel back into something that looks like a horse, which is very appropriate for a city that hosts the world’s largest rodeo. I think that the biggest objections that people have had to this have been they don’t want to be told what to do. And this morning, when I was getting ready to come here, I thought, gee, I wonder, how many requirements do we have in this general plan? So I did a quick PDF search for the word “require” in the general plan, and I found that there were 17, the word appeared 17 times in this document, which is pretty good. Now, with Councilman Trueworth’s requirement for parking, that may count may have gone up to 18, but I think that the city, the citizens of Prescott will still appreciate that this document is more advisory than regulatory, and I think everyone can agree with the requirement for more parking. So I wholeheartedly support what you have done. I like the way you’ve trimmed it down. I like the way you’ve taken out many of the political contentious items, and I fully support what you’ve done, and I look forward to this passing at your city council meeting with five, six, or seven votes, hopefully, and sending it off to the public to vote on in November. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Ken Fiddick, Soaring Avenue, Prescott. I only changed my comments about six times during the last two and a half hours. I was going to repeat what I said a week ago, but I can say that you’ve narrowed the scope from 354 to 107 strategies, if I heard Lois right. I believe that you folks have made progress. I was going to say you’re still not there, but I think you’re a heck of a lot closer than you were a week ago. And as my wife would say, well, first, I think all council members and staff are well-intentioned and are doing what’s right for the city and the community. I do believe that, even though you may disagree on various points, four to three, four to three, four to three on a lot of things today. But I think that was excellent progress today, very tedious in some cases. You know, you went right into the weeds, page by page, section by section, but well worth it, in my opinion. So hopefully, this council will at least get the five votes it needs to move it to the community. And I do think that had you not made this progress, you would be in trouble for having this approved in November. So I think this is good progress, even though others today may want the original wording and the original plan from March. So thank you again for this. Thank you for making the effort to keep Prescott Prescott. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. I’m mayor. First, I’m going to make some personal comments. I’ve lived here nearly 29 years. I was involved with good governance in preparation for the 2015 general plan. And again, a lot of hard work. It was well-written, and it was put away. And I want this general plan, if passed, to actually become a tool for use, other than something that tends to go into storage. And that will be my personal comment. My other comment, I’m president of the Granite Dells Preservation Foundation, and I was thrilled to see what was mentioned in open space. Open space is more than creating an area. It’s going to be a special place for all of us to enjoy, including the wildlife, and that has been extremely important to preserve. I do wonder where the Granite Dells has become Glassford Dells. As far as I know, there has never been a vote within the council to name the parkland, which is now the open space, and the maps of Prescott refer to it as Granite Dells. So I believe changing it at this point in the general plan to go for a vote, it should remain, as most people know, or there should be some explanation as to why it’s called Glassford Dells. The Glassford Hill area is actually in Prescott Valley. So I would like to see it remain, at least at this point and until there is a council vote, for an actual name of the parkland to remain as Granite Dells within that area. Thank you very much, and I appreciate all the work all of you have done, the committees and the council. Thank you.
Well, I will make a comment that when the state park was created, including the State Department of Parks and Recreation, the County of Yavapai... State Department of Parks and Recreation, the county of Yavapai, Prescott Valley, and Prescott, we all were part of that creation. So part of the decision was to combine the Dells with Glassford Hill, to be able to create a more effective marketing, to be able to attract people to this area, rather than calling it the Glassford Hill Regional Park. I figure people would rather come to see the Dells than they would to see the hill. So we agreed to name it Glassford Dells Regional Park, and that was part of the creation of that park, so it doesn't really require a vote of the council to approve it or deny it.
Kathy Rusing.
Hi, remember me? I want to thank everyone here for all the hard work that's been put into this plan. I just want to make some comments on some major deficiencies, based on the state statute, the general plan authority and scope. Number one, the circulation element does not include a map. The circulation element, this is out of the statute, the circulation element consisting of the general location and extent of existing and proposed freeways, arterial and collector streets, and bike routes, et cetera, et cetera. That map is not in our general plan. It was in the previous one, and I suggest that we contact Simpo and have them send over their future planning map. I've seen it, and I know it exists, so we can comply with the statute. Secondly, open space does figure prominently in this wording of this state statute, and it also requires a comprehensive inventory of open space areas, recreational resources, and designation of access points to open space and resources. And that map is also missing. So I suggest that if we're going to comply with the state statutes, we include that map. And then, thirdly, and most alarmingly, we touched upon airport protection of the east end of our main runway, and I'd like to request that we replace the brown blob future land use general plan map that we've been working off of with this one that has the labeling of the private properties, and it's more informative as to planning. So this is what was presented to us last week, and I assumed we were going to be working off of this this week, but we went back to the brown blob, because on the east end of the runway, it's privately-owned property, two sections of AED property, and unfortunately, our airport director was not here to defend the encroachment of residences onto this end of the runway, and it's very concerning, and we need to address that before we vote next week, because it is a costly mistake. We need to do the planning at this level and not wait till it's already, we're trying to annex it. And because today, as I understand, you increase the density to a maximum from two to seven dwelling units per acre, and I find that very alarming, and we need to address that with the airport director. And lastly, I want to thank you for being receptive to protecting the rural western heritage and independence of the people that live out on the Williamson Valley Corridor. It's a beautiful area, and we need to let the county decide, along with their own residents, how they want to grow out in that area. But thank you very much.
Linda Goldinger.
Well, I had long-written comments, and I'm not going to read them all, because I think most of them have been covered. I just want to say that I appreciate, too, how much work you've all put into this, the committees, the staff, the council. It scared me. I wasn't at the June 3 meeting, and it scared me to think that we might even consider starting over on this with as much work as has been put into it. Your efforts to reduce it, I understand it. I regret some of them. I regret some of the things that have been removed, but I support moving this plan forward, and I know other people have said that. I just want you to know how many of us support moving this plan forward and giving the voters a chance to comment on it. Thank you.
Sue Davis.
Mayor Good and council members, I started with a clean typed-out sheet, but like Ken Fittick, I made a lot of adjustments after a conversation. So thank you for the opportunity to comment on the 2025 general plan. My husband and I live on Country Park Drive in a small, unincorporated county island. I'm not trying to beat a dead horse right now. I just want to talk about the annexation. I understand county residents will be notified and allowed additional public hearings or opportunities for input prior to annexations. I wish to express my opposition to developed county, country park area being annexed into the city, and I want to confirm that I understand the consensus that county-developed areas will not be annexed unless initiated by residents by 50% support. That's the way I understand. Okay, thank you. So thank you for hearing our concerns and for your commitment to Prescott. I also, one more comment to Councilman Moore. I understand the general plan has been available for review for quite some time, but as a county resident, I only recently learned of the country park annexation. So thank you so much for all you guys do for Prescott.
Martha Nelson.
Hi, my name's Marty Nelson. I, too, had started with a typed, and lots of notes, but as soon as Chloe got up with her phone, I said, "The next time I talk in front of a group, I'm going to have a laptop or a phone and not a piece of paper." Regardless, I'm not going to say much of what I had written. I do agree with supporting the plan as it was written in March, and everybody's already told you why. I'm echoing or something. Issues from one of, some of my neighbors is the wording in the climate and the nondiscrimination, and the nondiscrimination wording, sorry. And I want to give my support for keeping everything as is. I'm going to tell you a little story in under three minutes. I grew up a white woman.
Ma'am, you have to speak into the microphone, please.
Speak into the microphone, please.
I'm sorry.
There's people online that are listening.
Oh, okay, thanks. Grew up white woman in the 70s. Social norms were women were going to be housewives, secretaries, teachers, or nurses. I love seeing the young women here doing other jobs than those three. And one of the worst things was I had to do dishes while the men went in the living room and smoked and had conversations, maybe had a great time. But I was assigned to the kitchen. I thought I knew what discrimination felt like then. But I want to fast-forward to 2020, just five years ago. I joined members of my church and my students from Prescott High. I did become a teacher. That was one of the three choices, in a rally, a peaceful rally around the Courthouse Plaza. While there, I was surrounded with dozens, hundreds of people in tactical gear, carrying AIR-15s, baseball bats, sidearms. In the streets, people were screaming at us from their vehicles, "Go home, losers!" And I thought, "I am home."
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. "I am home. Don't tell me to go home. This is my hometown." And you know what I thought at that moment? I felt that I learned about the fear that comes with discrimination. I was not afraid as a female when I was discriminated against or told I could only be a housewife. But when I was told to go home, loser, I learned about fear. That's all. Thank you. You guys worked so hard. I also did go to several of the planning meetings, and the work, the diligence, the inclusiveness is to be commended. Thank you.
Catherine Cronkite.
Mayor, council, thank you. My name is Catherine Cronkite, and I have been a homeowner in Chino Valley since 2008. What happens here in Prescott affects us in Chino. I strongly support the general plan and support the antidiscrimination statement, as it is written in its current form in the plan. We all deserve to walk in peace and not be harassed.
J.D. Greenberg.
Good afternoon. I'm a little bit tired, because I had the wonderful opportunity to visit the local fire station 71 last night, and they kept us, they kept us a little bit late. So I just want to point out that this is what I've been trying to go through for the past week. There have been all of these different versions, and it's really been confusing and laborious, and I also am frustrated that we're here at this point when there was so much opportunity for this to be discussed earlier, as Councilman Moore brought up. It really is frustrating, especially when we had the open houses, the 60-day public comment period, and ample opportunity for people to come to the General Plan Review Committee meetings. I mean, that's how I actually got on it. Thank you, Councilman Moore. I just want to give a quick plug before my usual thing regarding open space, and that's that the airport really does deserve some focus, because one of the things I learned, again, through the Citizens Academy, is that the runway is too short to allow full-fuel loads on planes taking off. So for private people going on commercial flights, that means they won't be able to take as much baggage, and for the tankers who help us fight the forest fires, they can't take off with a full load, which means they have to come back more often, which increases the danger. So for safety's sake, we need to support the airport and make provisions on that. In going through everything, I wound up spending most of my time on the red-and-blue version, "Go U of A," because it showed exactly what was being taken out. And the last 15 years of my work history, I taught case planning. So there were a lot of things that I was finding, and I was really kind of sad to see it. I commend the time that you put in, Lois, although I really wish that some of us from the public could have been there, do the meetings, and that wasn't a possibility. You and the staff worked hard on trying to bring things down. But when you've made some of the revisions, you used words like "appropriate," which are subjective, and they're not measurable. I really encourage you to go back to the original plan that we came up with, and I also want to give recognition to your cooperation with Simpo in terms of helping to establish wildlife corridor connectivity through the local municipalities. It needs to be a regional project, and we need to get it done, or we won't have that occasional pronghorn visible on any of our property. Thank you.
Rosemary Dixon.
Hi, thank you. I have lived in Prescott for 14 years, and I am here to say I completely support the antidiscrimination language. And I will tell you why. As a white woman, I had to learn about discrimination, but I've learned. I've learned a lot about it, and our people in Prescott are hurting. They are experiencing discrimination, whether you believe it or not, they are. So if the city chooses not to include the antidiscrimination language, we can only assume that the city condones discrimination. Thank you.
Chris Kuknio.
Good morning, mayor and council. I'm Chris Kuknio, Yavapai County Supervisor for District Four, and I'm here because I got a lot of calls from my district worried about potential annexation of the Williamson Valley area. And I wasn't going to speak, but there's a couple of things that came up today that I wanted to address. The zoning study we're doing is not just a simple study. This is a half-a-million-dollar, three-year-long zoning study that covers a huge actual area of study for us. It'll include things like dark sky, use of existing vegetation for development, lot splits, wildcat subdivisions, construction noise, water requirements, and this scale of study has not been done here since 1968, and a few things have changed since then. But this study will be limited to unincorporated Yavapai County. We respect boundaries, and we wouldn't try and push our findings or our decisions into the city of Prescott. But something was said about abusive water users, that this would protect it from people abusing water. But if you look at the properties adjoining these areas that are potential for annexation, there are two-acre parcels with a single-family residence on the two-acre parcels, as opposed to the potential 14 homes on two-acre parcels that had been proposed today. So what would be more of an abuse of water, one home or 14 homes? There's a common theme coming out of District Four. When I go around and visit everyone, we want to stay rural. The people come to me, they want to stay rural. And both the board and the council are dealing with the same issues that have been given to us over the past few decades. We're starting to reckon it. I think there's a real push to plan for the future and not just react to growth. We need to remember that every resident of Prescott is also a resident of Yavapai County. Instead of worrying about control, I would like to see a shared data and work together to plan for the future, because not only are we neighbors, but we're dang near family. So thank you, guys.
Michelle Hamer.
Hello, thank you for allowing us to speak. And I'd like to address a few issues that I heard today. You know, I kind of hang out with some people who know what's going on in city council, and I have a lot of friends. I didn't hear about the general plan until September, and I started asking other people what they thought. Nobody's ever heard of it. We have a whole Republican group here that we had to say, "Have you seen the general plan?" They didn't know anything about it. So maybe a better job next time in letting us know, so we can come and we can be part of the process. I'm also getting a bit tired of our city being called racist and a scary place to live. A group of us went to the Prescott Police Department and said, "How many hate crimes have been reported in the last five years? We'll give you that report." 2024, there was zero. And most of the kind of hate crimes that they had were mental illness, especially around the COVID time. I'll be more than glad to. So if we're having a lot of these things happening to people, our police department are unaware of it. And as far as taking some of these things out, like dark sky or Vision Zero and things like that, the money's already in the budget. It's already being spent. Tammy DeWitt said Tree City USA is ready to go. We've already had confirmation. That $96,000 is in the budget. So we can see it across the streets, all of our beautiful residential areas that now have cameras on them, white lines, you know, triangles, and nobody knows what to do with those. I've asked a whole group of people, "Do you know what shark's teeth are?" Nobody knew. I had one gal on Ross or stop, because she thought it was a place, it was a crosswalk, and she had to stop. So all of this money that... So all of this money that's being spent, that's really making our streets look ugly, is already being spent and going towards Vision Zero. I appreciate all of the people that want this plan to go through because the words are great. Everybody wants to have that kind of community, but you have to find out what it's going to cost us. And if you look at other cities that have been put in, the Tree City USA, the Vision Zero, high-density housing, climate change initiatives, all you're going to get in 10 years are rich people who can come to live here. Just look at Boulder. They put through all of these things. It all sounds great, but when it comes to economics, there is a cost and a, and there's a reaction to that.
You have 30 seconds.
And there's several, there's several cities around the country that you can get the same data. So all I'm saying is just be careful what you wish for. Look at the economics over the really good feelings that you have from doing this. Thanks.
Jana Kating?
Good afternoon. I'm Jana Kating. My qualifications are, I have, as other people have said, I have a bachelor's in history, I have a master's in healthcare administration, but the most important qualification that I have is I'm a voter who has lived in 11 different states, and Prescott is by far the very best place to live out of all of those places. I heard whispers behind me that they didn't like that you all were nitpicking this plan, and I want to thank you for being nitpickers. This is important. This guides where we're going. I don't appreciate people who sit up here on their phones and don't pay attention to what the public is saying to them right this very moment. This plan will guide the direction of our beloved Prescott, and we don't want to turn it into Sedona or Flagstaff. We are a majority conservative population. Just look at our current voter registration statistics. Let's keep Prescott Prescott. Our natural environment demands careful stewardship, but it does not trump the primacy of human need and the insurance of dual use when possible and needed. Let's not let the vocal progressive minority nudge us into higher-density, non-rural lifestyles dependent on technology and exorbitantly expensive alternative energy. Thank you for removing much of the non-required sections, and I love our small Mayberry in the pines, and I want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Stacey Bonamy?
Okay, I'm going to apologize ahead of time. I do not have my glasses, so I am a blind bat. I commend Councilman Furworth for listening to the concerns of the Williamson Valley community and investigating the annexation issue. The residents of Williamson Valley may not have a direct vote on the matter, but we are vocal, united, and firmly opposed to the annexation of our open spaces. We support the proposed changes presented to prevent this annexation. The term "climate change" is highly charged and politically divisive language. Without clear, widely accepted evidence, it alienates the general public and should be removed from discussion to gain broader support. And lastly, I would like to add, as a minority woman, I don't, how should I say this? So I am a Christian woman, and God created us imperfect for a reason. He created us to struggle and to learn from others. I am a, I came not that far after the Vietnam War, the Korean War, and the bombing of Pearl Harbor, and it has only made me a stronger woman. I do not, I am not a victim, and I, hmm, I've been very successful. It has nothing to do with my ethnicity, and it has nothing to do with my sex. Thank you.
That's all, mayor.
All right, we spent a lot of time today, and I'm going to reference again the anti-discrimination reference. I think we've tightened it up to a level that is almost acceptable, but we still have the reference to gender in there. And we have over $100 million in federal grant applications in front of the federal administration. And the current executive order that's been into effect since January directs each federal agency to assess grant conditions and grantee preferences and to ensure grant funds do not promote gender ideology. So everything else that's in there, I think, is acceptable, but I don't think that we should risk some federal bureaucrat on Google putting in gender and the city of Prescott when they're reviewing our application and deny it because there's a reference to gender in this general plan. Sexual orientation is, is understandable, but when it comes to gender and fluid genders, and I remember one state on the East Coast that said that in order for them to discuss gender, they had to have a hearing on all 72 genders that were claimed. So once the members of their legislature realized that they were going to have to have 72 meetings to discuss the other claimed genders, they decided to eliminate that from the consideration of their legislature. So this is a simple correction. I don't think it has any application to any significant number of people, and it does keep us from taking the risk of having those federal grant dollars rejected for that word alone. So I would recommend that we remove that from the discrimination section at the beginning of the general plan. And I would like to see how the rest of the council decides on that.
Thank you. And for reference, council, it is page eight of your packet. It is the second paragraph on the top of that page, and it's the middle sentence beginning with "as such." And if I understand correctly, Mr. Mayor, you're suggesting removing the word genders.
Correct.
Comments and consensus?
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, mayor. I feel the word genders is appropriate. I think it should stay in. When I'm talking to people, I don't say, what sex are you? I say, I would say, what gender are you? And the word genders is appropriate. We know there are two genders. It's a plural word. And I do not think by having the word genders in our general plan that we are promoting gender ideology. There's no support of gender ideology by using the word genders. I'm totally in favor of leaving it in.
Well, again, I'll read the executive order.
You've not, you've read it before, and it doesn't sway my opinion one bit.
So you're willing to risk all of the federal funding for our airport?
I'm willing to leave the word as it is.
Councilman Grady?
Yes, I support. I support genders being in that section, the anti-discrimination clause. We have been wrestling with this at the general plan review committee. Now we've been wrestling with it here, and I think we heard citizens today in support of that language. That's the language that we didn't even talk about during the middle of our going page by page process today. I think it needs to remain.
Mayor Protan?
I respectfully disagree. I would prefer to remove it. I'm not going to risk anything getting that federal money as we need here. We have a bigger cause than fighting over a word, so I do support the removal of it.
And Councilwoman Furworth?
As I said when we first brought the revision forward, I do not believe genders is gender ideology, but I also seriously want to protect the funding we need for the airport expansion. And so the only, I would not remove the word. I would potentially be willing to replace the word with sexes.
Well, again, the executive order says federal employees acting in official capacity and behalf of their agency shall use the word, the term sex and not gender. And then it also references how they will assess federal grant applications and grantee preferences. Councilman Gambogi?
I think what you've heard are two false flags. First, the slippery slope argument is a canard. Secondly, the general plan is not legally binding. So these fears that you've been subjected to are false flags.
Councilman Montoya?
I'm not compelled to remove the word genders. I don't think it does buy into gender ideology. I agree with Councilman Moore. To me, genders is pretty, pretty direct. There's two genders. It's a plural word. That's what you have when you have more than one, is a plural. Thanks.
It's two sexes, but not genders.
So we have three in favor of leaving it as is. Councilman Gambogi is that leave it as is.
Leave it as is.
So we have four in favor of leaving as is, three to take it out, and one of those three being a recommendation to change the word to sexes. So based on that, the consensus is to just leave it as is?
The majority says to leave it in.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for staff, Mr. Mayor or council?
Anything from city manager? Nope.
No.
All right, then this meeting is adjourned.